Mayor, we ready?
All right, thank you. If you'll mute your microphone, Paul, make sure you don't have the background. Looks like you've done that, thank you. All right, well, welcome, everyone. It's the City of Cowald Heights. It's Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. This is a work session to deal with the 2020 and 2021 city budget. Because we are hosting this meeting online, I've been reminded that if you would, if you're speaking, make sure you speak clearly into the microphone on your computer because we had a call or two last week of constituents who were not able to hear us. So you speak clearly into the mic. And I think if you'll mute your mic if you're not speaking, which will happen automatically, that saves on feedback coming through everyone else's microphone. So, welcome. Hopefully, we can be through by close to 7:00 PM. That would be my goal. Hopefully, we can do that. We have another meeting scheduled for next Tuesday to follow through with the budget, which is, hopefully, we don't have to a lot at that time, but we have that already scheduled. So with that being said, I'm going to turn the time now over to Tim Tingi following your agenda on staff reports. And let's have him give a presentation or an update where we are on the two committees. And then members of that committee could also comment. But, Tim, I'll turn it to you.
Okay, can you all hear me okay? So we have met with both committees, both the benefits and compensation, and then Budget Committee multiple times, going through different scenarios and different issues related to their respective areas. On the benefits and compensation committee, we just met last week was the last time we'd met previously to that and had talked about the merit figures as well as the cost of living and also the market study that we've done. A few weeks ago, we talked about, we'd just come into the COVID-19 health crisis, and we had talked about reevaluating after a couple of weeks to see where we were at. The bottom line is, and I shared this with each of the council members and the council communications, the recommendation that came from the committee is due to our health crisis, that the market merit and cost of living adjustments that we would hold on those for now, and that would be what we would look at. They would recommend as part of the adoption of the budget. And then they expressed commitment to reevaluate all of the increases at a later point when economic conditions improve. That would mean coming back, obviously, to the full council on the market merit and COLA, and it would be a budget amendment at that point. And so there is that commitment, and that was their recommendation, moving from that point. They also talked about different incentive options, bonus options for the employees, but opted not to recommend those at this point. And so that is their recommendation. Is there anything, Councilmember Bruce or Councilmember Peterson, that I am missing that you want to add to that?
I would just add how apologetically feel towards the staff who was anticipating an increase and gratitude for all of the effort that went into the review.
I'd like to second that, Tim. I know it's difficult, and it'll be interesting to see the timeline that we're dealing with as far as when the fall hits. It's, obviously, we'll look at that again in the fall, but it'll be interesting to see how the numbers shake out.
I'd like to make a comment, too, just for everyone's information, that the mayors in the valley held a special meeting last week to just share best practices of how they are coping with, one, the pandemic and how it's impacting budgets. During that conversation, we all talked about how we're handling staffing and benefits and compensation pretty much across the board. You know, not one of them, pretty much across the board. Everyone is following almost the same decision-making process that we have made with respect to freezing salaries, COLA, and merit, and actually including with that, you know, hiring freezes and keeping it really close. Also, most of them will be waiting till January to take a look again after the first six months. So we're pretty much right in tune with everyone else. And so I thought I would share that, yeah.
So then, moving on to the Budget Committee, if I may, we've met the last few weeks, I think, twice in the last four weeks, I believe, and have gone over a number of different assumptions, looked at a variety of different things. When we originally started meeting, it was before the COVID-19 issues. And obviously, that changed some of the perspectives as we moved along. The memorandum that we sent to you as part of the packet, the Budget Committee went through, basically, item by item in that. There were some areas that there were not agreement on that we're going to have to talk about as a full council, and we'll walk through that this evening. Scott Jurgis and I will do that. But the bottom line is, they looked at a number of different assumptions. One of the big things that was evaluated is how we're looking at the sales tax revenues and the projections, which we will talk about. The committee recommended that we look at a six-month timeframe where we anticipate pretty massive reductions in sales tax revenue. And so that's what's included in that memo that we'll walk through the details in just a few minutes. But anyway, the bottom line is, the assumptions, there was agreement on the majority of the assumptions. There's a number of projects and things in the budget that we need to talk about as a full council, which we hope to do tonight as we walk through that memo with you. So that's my report on that committee, unless there's Councilmember Michael or Councilmember Bracken, if there's anything else you want to add that I missed, feel free. Okay, if not, should I just keep going, Mayor?
Just one additional comment, if I might. And first of all, I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding as we work through this in a lucid fashion. I think it's important to note, too, with benefits and compensation, of course, we need to applaud our employees for the reduction in benefit costs for our insurance. I think that really needs to be noted. Maybe that'll be noted as we go forward. The other thing I wanted to make sure that is on the record, that the compensation study, where we use the intern, though it's been looked at briefly, it's never been submitted to the full council and adopted or reviewed. So I hope everyone understands that if they've not seen it or have not looked at it in detail, it still will come to the full council for review. Is that correct, Tim?
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, the bottom line is, we had moved through it, and we're getting to that point where we would share with the council, and we still had to vet it even more with the Compensation Committee. But just as that was happening, COVID-19 hit, and it kind of put a halt on where we're at with that. So, yes, it will definitely come back.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask just one question? When we go to look at the COLA, whatever point in time that we use the same base number, I think we usually use the December from the current year. I mean, the cost of living was likely to change between now and then, so I'm assuming that we'll just look at whatever that same time point to the current time point is as far as what the COLA might be.
Yes.
So if there's a greater increase in salaries and stuff like that, that will be reflected in the new COLA number you present us later in the year.
We would evaluate what the most recent COLA figure is based on the national reports on that, so.
But I'll still come back to the council to determine if that's the direction or not.
Do you want me to continue, Mayor?
Please.
Okay, so Scott Jurgis and myself are going to present the memorandum that was sent to the council. We're going to walk through it, basically, item by item, and explain the details of that. That's what we're going to do first. Then there's going to be, obviously, some time that we need to talk about with the whole council, some of the items that there was not a consensus necessarily in the Budget Committee. We'll go through that, have the discussion. And then after that, we promised as staff that we would do a comparative analysis. We talked very briefly with our methodology with the Budget Committee. We have developed this analysis, which compares a variety of things related to the budget with other communities. We will share that at the end to make you aware of that, and it's fairly detailed. So just know that that's coming. I know this is something that we discussed last year, that we would develop this, and we have developed that, and we are prepared to share that tonight, but we'll do that at the end. So, that being said, Scott, if you want to pull up the memorandum, and we're just going to walk through, I'm going to have Scott go through that section by section and explain the details of that.
Okay, so this is updated a little bit from the one that I sent to you because I found a typo. We're down in, can you see that red dot? Does that show up?
Not the red dot.
That doesn't, oh, great. Okay, well, too bad. The 2019-2020 there, I am on the original one that was sent out with the agenda that had said 2018-2019, so I updated that. That's the only difference between this draft and the one that was sent out previously. So anyhow, just know that. So first, what we had to do as we were developing the budget is we needed to kind of project out the current year budget so that we could get an idea of where we would land the budget, how much fund balance we would have. And so we did quite a detailed analysis of each division, excuse me, and both personnel costs, operational costs, other things like that, as well as a monthly analysis of the major revenue sources that we have to try and project where we would end at the end of the year. We believe that we'll end at about $3,850,000 total fund balance in the general fund only. That represents a reduction of $433,000 over the current beginning fund balance, which is about $127,000 better than what we are budgeted to be. So that's good. And part of that is that we're ahead in our sales taxes quite a bit right now. So even though we're going to see a reduction in our sales taxes, we think we've got enough in there that we're going to be okay, plus with some under-expending our expenditures. So the $3,850,000, that represents 18.6% of our budgeted revenues for the current year. And we're required to have 5% that we hold by state statute and another 1% for a total of 6% by city ordinance. So that's $1,241,000. And then we have a reserve for compensated absences, that's PTO and vacation. That's about $550,000 in the past year, so we're going to continue to project that. That leaves just over $2 million available for appropriation, starting for July 1 of this next year going forward. Moving forward, as we proceed into the new year, you know, one of the main things we always start with is revenues. How much money are we going to have? What are the projections going to do? Property taxes are very stable, and one of the main sources of our revenue is the largest individual revenue that we have. Our current year budget is $5,000, under $8 million, actually, $5 under $8 million. We always get a little bit of new growth. That's when people, either a new house is finished, a basement's finished, an addition's put on a house, whatever. And so we will get some new growth. This is a projection because we will get the actual new growth numbers in June, when the county auditor puts forth the new certified tax rates and everything. But our projection is for a $50,000 increase. It would bring it to $8,500,000. That's our new taxable, or our new revenue that we will get on property taxes going into the new year. The big question, and which is why it's highlighted yellow here, is sales taxes. Sales taxes, we went back to the 2000 to 2011 recession area to look at it and say, okay, what happened during that timeframe? During this timeframe, we saw about, at the maximum reduction, about an $845,000 annual maximum reduction during that period. That $845,000 translates into about $70,000 per month of a reduction. We think this is going to be a little worse than that in terms of the reduction, especially in these early months where we're going through. So we're estimating closer to $100,000 net impact for each month that we still, we see the impacts of this current situation. That $100,000 is a 42% increase over the $70,000 that we saw in the 2008-2011 area. If we saw the reductions go for a full annual period, that would be $1.2 million, or, I can't quite see that on my page, 18%. Let me see if I can skim this over. 18, I can't quite see it. It's behind everybody's picture, 18.9% or something, whatever it says. Is that what it says?
18.9.
Yeah, okay. 18.9% net reduction of our sales tax revenues if it continued for a full year. There's not a lot of information on this. We're actively seeking input, both from the state and the county. And the county has a task force that's looking at different revenue impacts and trying to get, work with the State Tax Commission and get information earlier if possible, because there's about a two-month lag on getting information. The latest information from the county, that's been the only organization that's really put out any projections of any, shows a baseline estimate of about an 11% reduction, but that 11% reduction is based on a calendar year, not our fiscal year. So some of that will occur during the end of our current budget that we're in as we round out in June, and then some of that will occur from July 1 going forward. So from July 1 going forward, the county is estimating about a 9% net reduction for July through December. We, if we were to see $125,000 monthly increase, it would be even higher than what we're currently projecting. That would, if it went for a full annual period, it would be an impact of another $300,000, the difference between 1.2 million and 1.5 million on it. But basically, we're thinking that the sales tax revenues will drop off quickly, and then they'll come back up gradually over a period of time. The exact period of time is not specifically known, but there are some estimates. We chose to put in a net of $600,000 reduction to our sales taxes. That would, that is, basically translates into 18.6% reduction from July through December, and then followed by a more normal amount of revenues. Or if you wanted to look at an annual reduction, it's 9.4%. And so that's actually very close in line with what the county's reduction that they're anticipating on their end. And again, we'll keep our eyes on that very, very close, because, as we said, instead of being 100,000, 100,000, 100,000, then all of a sudden have an absolute recovery, we figure it's probably going to drop maybe even a little more than 100,000 in the early months, but then come back up over a period of time to the point where it's nearing normal, maybe around December, January timeframe. Again, that's just a projection. We'll be watching and updating that as we go forward, trying to get a handle on things as we get better information as things go forward. Let's see. It will be, so we will know our March sales taxes in early June and our April sales taxes in early July. When we get those, again, that will be immensely helpful because we will get real information that we can base some of our decisions on. So anyhow, it's about a $1.5 million net reduction from what we were estimating in pre-COVID-19, because we were estimating about a $270,000 annual increase from what our current year sales taxes is. So if we had a full year, it would be $1.2 million of downturn, plus the loss of our projected upturn of $270,000. So that kind of maybe puts some of that in perspective. But in the budget, we have included a reduction of 600,000 from our current year's budget. We didn't put in any growth or any of those kinds of things in there. County option sales, highway sales tax, it's budgeted.
All right, just so you're clear, so the total reduction from last year's or the current year's budget would then be 870,000, the 600 plus the 270 that we're not adding because of COVID-19.
No, it would be 600,000. The 270 would have been what we would have added in for the next year. So it's 600,000, not 870,000.
Okay, thanks.
The county option highway sales tax is budgeted at 600,000. This is sales tax-related. If it went down the same 10-ish percent, it would be about $60,000 roughly, or it would be about 10,000 per month or 5,000 per month if it was put over an annual period. We think that there's probably enough in our forecast of sales taxes to cover any downturn that we may see in the county option sales tax. So we chose not to make any changes on that at this point in time, and we'll keep an eye on that and just see if we think, but even if we did make an adjustment there, it wouldn't be large. It would probably be in the $50,000 range if we did anything.
Help me understand where that tax comes from.
So this last, so it was last, a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago now, the county opted in for a transportation.
Okay, that's right.
Highway sales tax. And so we didn't have a direct city say on that, but that's when that went into effect, was in July of 2019. We started to collect that.
Yeah, I remember now, yeah.
And there's a distribution to the cities on that, yeah.
Yeah, we signed a support letter for that, yeah.
Yeah. Energy use tax, this is our power and gas, natural gas. We see around a 4% to 5% reduction in that each year. So we're recommending a budget of $1,950,000, and that matches pretty close to the trends of our current projection and everything like that. So fee in lieu of, this is the vehicle taxes that you pay when you renew your vehicle registration, and we've collected 434,000 this year. We think it'll be pretty close to that next year. It's really a function of your property tax, really, is how that's distributed. Franchise taxes, which is cable TV, we've currently budgeted $310,000. That's a reduction of $15,000 from the current budget, and that matches about a 4.62% decrease. Again, that matches our current projection in that. In all of these tax-type changes to our budget, it's a $664,000 reduction. 600,000 of that would be directly the reduction in sales taxes. 64,000 would be a combination of the other items, the property tax going up and other items going down and everything. So that's how that all worked out. The telecom tax, just for note, this was talked about during the retreat. It was reviewed and considered, but was not recommended for this time, at this time to implement that tax. The tax would generate about $350,000 annually, and there's a little bit of a process. It would take, I'll say roughly 90 days to put that into place and needs to be in place at the beginning of a quarter and coordinated with the State Tax Commission if we want to do that. For other revenues, Class C roads is budgeted at $1,200,000. That's a reduction of $30,000 to be more in line of what we're seeing on the annual increases in that. One thing about the Class C roads is that this is based on gas taxes. We have not yet seen any direct projection or real figures of gas taxes. We are hearing that they are down, so we'll need to watch this. And hopefully, between now and when we put together a proposed bud, or I mean, the tentative budget officially in May, we'll have better information where we might be able to give any additional, you know, information we needed to let you know about by then.
Just a quick comment. When I was talking about the option highway sales tax, I was actually thinking of the Class C road funds, which are impacted by the volume sales of gasoline. I talked to Holiday Oil Owner just this last week, and their stations that are local in neighborhoods are down 30% to 40%. Gas stations that are in a more traffic-heavy area off a freeway or something are down 50-plus percent, just as an FYI.
Yeah, and we'll have to watch that. Again, I think that it will be one of the ones that drops off severely and then comes back similar to the sales taxes. It just depends on how quickly people start driving around and things. Again, we'll have to watch that and bring back some more information at a future meeting when we go through that. But we have not yet changed this revenue with anything in terms of a reduction. School District Resource Officer, this is a mid-year adjustment that we did last year, and that will continue to be in there. And I note that on here because we're showing changes from our original adopted budget in our revenue, and so I wanted to make sure that that was known, that we're retaining that in there to match that. The event revenue for Butlerville Days in the Play are budgeted at $41,000, and this is over the original budget. It was originally budgeted as an offset to expenditures, and now we budget this as a individual revenue and then the full expenditures. So there is a chance, if, depending on what happens with Butlerville Days and/or the Play, where some of that revenue could go, but also expenditures would go down as a result of that. And you can see down here below that the expenses for Butlerville Days are budgeted at 107,000. So the net cost for Butlerville Days specifically is $66,000, just so that that's disclosed. There has been a few expenditures going towards that, but not a lot at this point in time. Municipal center rents, we recommended a $5,000 increase on this. Again, this could be impacted due to the projections of what's going to happen. The current year, we've seen about $8,000 of revenue to date. So we were on par to be closer to $10,000, which the extra 5,000 would put it at $10,000. This could decline, but it's not a material change if we, we're off a little bit on this particular lineup. And then revenue, interest revenues, we've always overshot our interest, and so I felt good about putting about $25,000 in there. Still gives us some wiggle room where we'll definitely make that revenue and not have any issues there. The combined other changes are $121,000. So total revenues are budgeted right now in this document at $19,972,000. So that's a reduction of 543,000 from the current 2020 original adopted budget, or a 2.73% decline. And again, we'll keep an eye on that going forward so that we can know what's going on and what will happen. Going to expenditures, so.
Scott, before you move to expenditures, let's give the council an opportunity to see if they have any questions on revenue projections. Obviously, these are unique, challenging times. For Doug's information, one of the numbers that's always important to me at the beginning of any budget preparation is the available fund balance in the general fund. And so that $2 million is something that is partially a result of a truth in taxation we went through two years ago with the. He went through uh two years ago with the understanding that that would help be a bridge over the next couple of years. That's one number that's important to me. It is a number that is there to be uh distributed or budgeted. Based upon the process that we're going through. Any other questions on revenue that anyone has? Very none. Scott, go ahead on expenditures.
Okay. So um when we we started down the road of expenditures and and projecting what we were going to do prior to uh the the current outbreak. And so things looked drastically different even a month ago than they do now. And um when when things started to happen and the revenue situation began to decline. We really changed our our outlook to be hold everything as flat as possible. Or even possibly decrease things as we could. Um and as as Tim and others have already commented on. The the um employee costs have have been basically put on the shelf. Any changes to employee costs just due to the lack of revenue right now to be able to cover those increases. Um but in here, we're disclosing to you some of those details. The market adjustment that we performed, just so you know, there were recommended range adjustments anywhere between zero and twenty three percent. With the average being about four point three percent. Again, this is new information to many of you and if we ever get to the point where we're gonna adopt this, this would be brought out and and discussed in much more detail to you. But I want you to be aware of at least what we've done. So by the time we adjust the market rates and then also the pay rates accordingly, the total cost of that would be about three hundred and twenty five thousand. We had originally projected about four hundred thousand for that, so it is a little bit less than our original projection, but not immensely. We would be able to implement the market um structure at a reduced impact of a hundred and thirty three thousand. If we didn't um change the pay rates as much and just held them very low. Um again, it so there's kind of two options, the three twenty five option and the one thirty three option that we would need to go through with you at some future time. If we decide that that's something that we could consider. On the COLA, the current COLA typically what we've done is we've taken the national CPI index. That ended in the December prior, so in December of twenty nineteen, the amount was two point three percent. Um then that becomes, if you will, the basis for what we typically recommend a COLA going forward. If we implemented a COLA at that two point three percent, it would be a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And that would be eligible to all employees who aren't out of their current market range. Um but again, we chose not to do that. And as Councilman Bracken uh indicated, at at any future time when we would consider this. We would look at what the CPI index is to date for the current fiscal or current calendar year, see where that is. And if we got all the way to December, take that and then we can, you know, kind of add the two together. And if you have a plus and a minus, it would it would net out to some other amount. But we would need to look at that at that point in time in the future at some point in time. The merit that is that we typically do, um we we recommended changing the step um plan that we had. And and again, a lot of this hasn't been disclosed to many of you at this point in time because it just doesn't make sense. But basically, a three point six two percent um step for each merit increase. Um that's very similar to what we've recommended in the past several years for merit um with our current structure. The cost to do that would be to about two hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. And then again, that would be eligible to all those employees who aren't at the top of their ranges and that just allows you to reward an employee for uh becoming better over time. Uh with their job and and the things that they do. But again, we're not recommending to do that. And the health costs, the for the health insurance, we actually saw a six point five percent reduction. And that's largely driven by uh lower utilization by employees. So there was a decrease in our healthcare costs of about fifty five thousand dollars. And then the employees, because they pay a portion of that premium, will see a reduction in their uh pay. The what's deducted from their pay for their premium. Um but it is not huge on on that side. And then dental cost had no change and and neither did the other aspects of insurance that we cover. Um year over year, so each year when we budget, we budget a certain number of employees based on whoever we have. Usually in about April or so. And as we look at what we budgeted last year and what we budgeted this year. Uh due to changeover, maybe you have somebody who's high in the in the um uh pay range and they quit, retire, whatever they do. And we hire somebody lower in the pay range. Or maybe we hire somebody who had family insurance and we hire some and or they they leave us with family insurance. And somebody is hired with single insurance or even chooses not to get insurance. We have savings that occur as that happens. And we saw savings of about thirty five to thirty six thousand dollars from that this year as we went the year over year uh budget comparisons. And so the total employee cost changes that are in here is a reduction of ninety one thousand dollars from the current budget. And that's made up by the reduction in health cost and then the um savings for in the turnover of employees each year. And again, the recommendation as Tim already indicated would be that if if we have any recovery of our revenues to a point where it makes sense. That we could bring this back to the council and go through a process to recommend possibly changing the budget at that time. But again, that wouldn't occur until the revenues could justify that. Um other departmental or division items that we um have changed. So in our elections, we had originally had sixty thousand budgeted and then we made an adjustment mid-year to take twenty of that out because we didn't need it. And we're now pulling the rest of that out because we have uh biannual city elections and don't need that this year. Our liability and auto insurance is currently budgeted at uh about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Our premiums are about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, give or take a little bit on average. And then we're recommending adding fifty thousand dollars to that to cover our uh liability deductible that we need to pay. So on on vehicle liabilities, when when we get in an accident, that's our our fault on a vehicle. We need to pay up to five hundred dollars per claim. And then if we have a general liability claim, then we need to pay up to ten thousand dollars per claim uh that comes in on that. And we saw a few of those coming through this year, both in vehicle and in liability, where we saw some payouts. And and that payout actually exceeded fifty thousand a little bit this year. But we think that this is going to be enough um based on history to be able to cover what we have, what we need. Um we had some money budgeted for an intern for the market study and we don't need that anymore. So we're pulling ten thousand dollars out for that. Um we at city attorney costs, there we're recommending no changes right now. City survey, we. City survey, we had um white Y two analytics do a survey for us this year uh to see what the community desired of of us as a city. And what they thought of our what we're doing and we can take that out as they've completed that. We don't plan on redoing that this next year. Uh no changes on mayor and council. The legislative committees were recommending taking out the Jordan River Commission. Uh contribution, so that would take that to a zero going into the future. On the events, we did an adjustment, we do a carryover adjustment of the arts committee. And it they actually had a negative carry forward, so we need to add that that back into them uh going into the next year, just so it their their whole once again. So that's more of a technical change there. The city manager, we're recommending no changes. Records, cultural, culture, human resources, we're recommending no changes. Finance and IT, we're recommending no changes. City hall maintenance, there's two items here that we're looking at. One is twenty five thousand dollars for capital type maintenance. And this would be things where are typically larger expenditures. Um we're not there yet, but one day we'll need to put a roof on the building. We may have to change some HVAC equipment out and other things. But we are to the point where potentially we need to paint or say a large room where it could be a lot of money. Or uh change out flooring in in a larger room. We're probably not there yet, but it could come. And so we're recommending to have twenty five thousand that we pull into a reserve and then utilize that when we have one of these larger expenditures. And we'll look at what what makes sense in terms of a maximum amount to carry in there as we progress through the years. But probably growing that um up to maybe a hundred thousand dollars net or so in that point, that area. Just so we have enough money to cover some of the larger expenditures that are capital in nature. We're also at recommending to add five thousand to cover some day to day maintenance items at city hall. Um these are some of the things that we're seeing, just a a little bit of a creep up as we go through and the and city hall starts to get a little bit more loved as we go through. Um the years. Community and economic economic development, uh net of four thousand dollar reduction. And that's made up of a reduction of five thousand on the affordable housing update, reducing that down from ten thousand to five thousand. And then on the CHB uh event, cost increased growth uh of a hu- of a thousand dollars. Overall, police cost D is an increase of sixteen thousand dollars. Made largely of our fees that we need to pay to VAC of thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty one dollars. And then a smaller increase that we have to pay to versa term for our records management of twenty two hundred dollars. Fire current, this has not been voted on by fire yet, so this is still a placeholder, but looks like where they're heading. Um a hundred thousand eight ninety eight and that represents a two point six four percent early projection. This is made up of kind of two things. One is a little bit of an increase on their side as they see some costs go up. But they're not recommending any em- employee based increases for their current budget that they're going into. Um but then also a the calls, as you compare year over year to the prior year, our calls are going up a little bit in comparison. To our neighbors. And so um we're seeing uh an increase there of a hundred thousand eight ninety eight.
And and we're on that one, we're, we want to have some further discussions um with UFA to make sure we understand all the implications of that. So just know that that's one thing that we will be doing.
Um public works, we're recommending fifteen thousand dollars of changes and this is really driven by uh parks. We have some a contract with Cottonwood Heights Recreation District to provide maintenance at some of the parks and some of the other um areas. Um through the city that are going up. Lot, much of it is due to the year year round bathrooms, maintenance at uh Mount View Park. But there's also some that's going up for some of the snow removal. Uh so it's about ten thousand net for the parks and about five thousand net for the snow removal that they do at various areas through the city. Um then we get into our list of other items. Tim had uh hinted around at this. These are items that we didn't fully make um decisions on with the budget committee. So we're looking to uh you for some direction on each of these items. So I'll go through them and and then maybe, I don't know exactly when we want to talk about them, but I'll just go through them all now, so everybody's aware of all the different items.
Yeah, Scott, go through them briefly and then we'll come back to them, but go through them briefly because I think the council's aware of most of these.
Okay, so, excuse me, the maintenance of county park and ride locations. And this is for the locations that reside in our city. There's a recommended allocation of sixty five hundred dollars that would be payable to the county on those. The county owned parks, there are two parks. I am going to forget, I can all, I think it's Bywater and Mill Creek if I'm correct. That the county would like to transfer to us. They're more of a city park than a regional park. Uh if we take those.
It's Mill Hollow and Butler.
Butler, yeah.
Oh, see, I, this is what happens when you let me try and do that on my own. But um so if if we if we take those, there's about seventy five thousand dollars of maintenance. And then a water and and power costs of about fifty five thousand dollars combined on both of those parks. So the net cost would be about a hundred and thirty thousand if we if we chose to take those parks into the city and and uh adopt them as regular city parks.
Hey Scott, I have a question on that. We spoke a little bit about the water shares. What are they presently using for water for that uh west side of Butler Park?
So, well, I can just address, I I contacted the county and there there is not an option for water shares with these taking with these parks over. Um and and so that's not on the table with the county.
So they're retaining the shares?
Well, I I don't, I don't know if uh they were utilizing shares for that site, but that's not part of. There will be no sure shares that will come to the city with this.
But also as a city, we have, what, twenty shares?
No, we have, we have about twenty uh twenty four shares.
Yeah, we have twenty four shares. We need to investigate to see how those are applied because they give you a credit with. So I city public utilities if they're not already being used, so.
Yeah, I know that, I know eighteen of the shares are are being utilized as a credit for the Mount View Park. That's what I did find out. So there.
How many shares?
So there's six additional shares beyond the eighteen. I don't know how that converts over. We'd have to look at that.
Um, yes, I mean, that's, that's, that's a really big number and uh it's, it's too bad that uh. They wouldn't see that whatever they're using to pay the water now would be something that we would uh want to actually be able to utilize ourselves. I mean, they're, they're true, I mean, I I agree that they're probably city parks and they should be. But uh I would think if we were developing them as a city, we'd have probably investigated getting shares when we did it.
I think we can talk further. I'm not sure that they have water shares or tied to those in any way. They may be using just culinary water because what we what we did receive from the county. Was a copy of the amount of dollars budgeted that they're paying, which tells me that they're paying a line item budget for water. They're not getting a credit from water shares. I think that's what was shared with Tim.
That's correct, that's correct.
We can, we can double, triple check, but when I talked to Wayne Johnson, he sent me his line item budget for what he's actually paying dollars for water last year.
So out of the twenty eight shares, we're using at least eighteen right now. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Are we fully using those eighteen at Mount View or is there some excess?
I don't know the answer to that. I, we haven't delved into that um significantly. We'll have to do that.
Does that uh twenty four that you were talking about include the, I think there was four that we received from uh the uh Reese property here across the street?
Um, I need to look at that. I need to look and see. I'm not, I don't have the breakdown right off the top of my head. I can, I can find that here in just a second.
We're also in negotiations with Dale House who wants to donate one share to us.
Well, Dale's been great with that. He's, we've gotten a number of the ones that we do have have come via him.
Yeah.
One other question, uh what we might propose is what can we do with one share? What's allowed with one share on the square footage, I guess?
My understanding with the water departments, like city public too, they give you a dollar amount credit per share. Uh don't hold me to this, but it was something like between two and three thousand dollars per share. I can't remember something.
Mayor, the one, the ones that I have seen, um they give you a a net amount of um water usage. So many acre feet per year per share. I I think it's like a fractional acre foot and then anything you use in excess of that, you get billed at fortunately the city rate, which is nice. Cause that's uh, cause our regular rates are a hundred and thirty five percent of the city rates. But it's a, it's a set amount, so it's not a dollars amount, at least the ones that I've seen around here, like the ones that came from over from the city hall area. Um but it was a set amount of water that you could use and then anything beyond that you got billed. Um but each agreement could be different.
Either way, something we need to investigate and uh look at how we can leverage those to offset costs, yeah.
And I have a breakdown of those I'm looking at right now of the twenty four shares that we have anyway and what we paid for some of those shares. But I don't know if we need to get into that right now. We'll, we'll have to look into that further.
Okay. Um, the next item is uh snow removal. It was recommended to look at what it would cost to add snow removal at a park. Um and this is not talking about the perimeter walkways that have to be cleared, but this is the internal walkways. And uh it's about two thousand dollars per park. Um it may fluctuate a little bit depending on how many internal walkways there are. Um but we could add that and then. But we could add that and then rotate that around to different parks or, you know, expand that to even more if we wanted to have additional. Walkways cleared on that. The Trailhead slash Nature Park slash Dog Park. I guess we could even add slash park and ride at Ferguson Canyon.
Not a parking ride. It's not.
Not a parking ride?
Not a parking ride.
Okay, so that's an update. So the.
Wait, hold on, hold on. I think it could be a park and ride, right? I mean. We, I think we talked a little bit about this yesterday, Tim, right?
Yeah, we did. I, I mean, it could be. That's, that's not something that. U dot has recommended that there be a place where buses come and stop at this site.
Well, maybe they can fund the five hundred thousand dollars we might lose by not. So let's, I mean, I think we need to be really creative here. As we discussed on the phone yesterday, maybe I don't know if the other council members feel the same way, but. We could talk about this at the appropriate time. Just. I've been silent for an hour. You know me, that's a long time.
I mean, the original. Agreement contemplating contemplated it as a park and ride as well as a trailhead. But since then, we've had the E I S with Wasatch Boulevard and the trails and everything, and so it's kind of is. Merge a little bit, but I mean, yeah, I mean, the original agreement contemplated that type of use. I guess the question is, is. Whether we would still go through with that or not.
Yeah.
So the, the estimates to finish it have been, I put between zero and one point four million. I guess that's. Additional costs. The cost to to finish it will be really between one point two million and one point four million. And it depends on our options if we phase it and other things like that. We currently do have the commitment that's been referenced at five hundred and fifty thousand to update that. We currently only have a hundred and twenty five thousand budgeted towards this in our current nineteen twenty. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty budget. So there are several options if we want to finish this that we've identified and there may be others. One would be to utilize some of the current Bonneville Shoreline Trail Grant funding. That grant, just to remind you, is one point six million. We've committed one million of that towards the Despain property. And we would leave six hundred and fifty thousand available for other projects that would need to be. You know, directed by council on. Another item is to transfer from the general fund all are part of the cost. The C D R A fund has funds there. Some of those funds could be available depending on a legal review of allowable uses plus. Some other footwork that would need to happen with other taxing entities to be able to go down that road. When we could possibly renegotiate with the county, that was kind of brought up and I don't know if that's as much of an option at this point in time. Big Cottonwood Trail Maintenance, so I'm gonna, I'm flipping to the next item, just moving forward. Big Cottonwood Trail Maintenance was currently budgeted and. Was scheduled to be funded by track funds from the Salt Lake County. But the county has asked those fun thing, uh, projects to be put on hold due to the fact that their revenues are down. Okay, and so that's eighty three thousand. And so. We, we could potentially fund that and do that from our general fund and look at a, and future year. Reimbursement of that. And then this item of. Of possible incentives for employees who come up with some good ideas to save city money. Estimated impact of ten thousand, but this was not recommended as Tim indicated from the Compensation and Benefits Committee. And then a possible reduction in the annual contribution to the Central Wasatch Commission. Currently, that's in at fifty thousand dollars. There's no changes recommended to F T Es in this. And we do, but we do have a proposed hiring freeze in place until the economy turns as we move forward. So overall, what's included, which is not these items right here that we just went through. But the items that are actually included. The expenditures are recommended at seventeen million five hundred fifty two thousand, which is an increase of sixty thousand. Made up of these things, U F A liability, cost, maintenance. Some parts, parks, maintenance, versa term and back increases. Business Association increase offset by employee reductions, which is not. Reductions of actual F T Es, just year over year reductions of ninety one thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand in community survey, twelve hundred in Jordan River Commission contribution, forty thousand in elections. And five thousand in affordable housing. Then the transfers out of the general fund are for the Capital Projects Fund. Are recommended at. Eight, a million eight hundred and thirty two thousand. That it matches what's in the budget for this year. These items in Public Works and that are capitalized could be reduced or delayed. To help with some of the economic slowdown, just to, you know, to help support the general fund if we desire to go down that road. But going forward with this, that's the recommendation. Debt Service Fund, there's a slight reduction of fifty two hundred dollars in this. As we had basically mainly in the police vehicles, it went from four hundred and twenty six thousand down to four hundred and seventeen thousand for the current year. So overall, the impact of changes that are outlined, there is a use of fund balance. Of one point two million dollars. The ending fund balance would be two million five hundred seventy eight thousand, so that would be twelve point nine percent of our. Revenues included in the, in this budget approval, budget. Proposal. Again, by the time we hold everything out that we need for the six percent plus the compensated absences, it would leave eight hundred and twenty three thousand available for appropriation. At the end of the budget year. Capital improvements, just to kind of go over. We are, we're projecting to end the year. This assumes every project's actually going to finish, which it won't, but. With two hundred, two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars of beginning available fund balance for appropriation. So the transfer in at one point eight million from our general fund. Made up of six hundred thousand from that, that transportation, sales tax. Plus. One point two million just generic fund transfer from the general fund. Plus, this is one item that wasn't reviewed with our Budget Committee because it's more of a technical thing. When we buy our new police vehicles, we, we get the revenues from the, the sale or the. The bond, if you will, that we do for the police vehicles, the lease that we do. And then we turn around and pay for those vehicles as it comes in. So this is just more of a technical thing. It's about a million nine hundred and seventy five dollars. The overall Public Works budget is one point eight million. Broken out between street funding to be a million seven hundred and thirty one, some cities, some striping of the streets. Neighborhood projects of just under five hundred thousand. Some prep work for the next year of two hundred and forty two thousand. Some capital maintenance, which is usually overlays or others, chip seal. As, as you see it there. Some sidewalk projects currently included is the trip hazard and the fifty fifty program. Seventeen hundred east sidewalk is recommended to be delayed to a future year and not funded. Also on storm drains, we're recommending not to do any storm drain items. But to look at a stormwater fee. Just for an example, again, this hasn't been brought before the whole council at all, but if we were to do a fee of seven dollars and fifty six months. It would allow for about three hundred thousand dollars of of stormwater maintenance costs that we currently pay by the general fund. To be retained in the general fund. And then also would make about a million dollars annually available for stormwater and capital and maintenance costs.
Those are annual figures, so if it didn't start till. January, it would be half those amounts for the budget we're talking about.
Yes, yep. So we will need to re-budget things and we'll look at that when we're getting probably about September, October of this year. The projects that won't be complete, but those should already have the funds available in the, in the, in the Capital Projects Fund. Currently, there are no dollars in there for. For any trails projects. The Ferguson Canyon Trailhead Nature Park, that, that's one of the items that we need to discuss what to do with that. And there will be some, again, some re-budget items that we'll have to take into effect. The police vehicle purchase, like I talked about before, more just a technical in and out, pretty much the same day that happens. And then, so the net cost is a million, just under a million eight of. Public Works type. Projects and then a million nine seventy five for the police vehicles for three million seven hundred and seventy one. That would actually. Have an increase of thirty six thousand fifty two dollars in our Capital Projects Fund. So it would take our net capital projects available fund balance to two hundred and sixty four thousand at the end of that year. Debt service is pretty straightforward. It's just the, the agreements that we have to pay different vehicles. We have our police annual lease of four hundred and seventeen thousand. There's the police payoff, which is when we sell the vehicles back to the dealer and then we utilize that to pay off that, that lease. There's the Public Works vehicle lease. And then there's the building bonds for the, this building in for some of the public works yard improvements. And then I put in just a five hundred dollar miscellaneous. If you remember last year, we had. A very slight amount that we had exceeded this budget and I put five hundred dollars in there, both in revenue and in. Expenses, just so we don't have that happen to us again in the future if there's any minor little things that flow through here. C D R A fund, this, it has a projected ending fund balance of a million nine thirty six for the year. We've, just for information, we've completed our agreement to both. Receive and pay seven point seven million dollars to the Canyon Center parking structure. We're expecting about a hundred thousand dollars in revenues. We may get up to a hundred thousand professional fees, but it may not be that high. Of the one point nine million dollars projected ending fund balance, approximately two hundred is going to be attributable. To the Canyon Center project, which will then be distributed to everybody starting in our very next budget year that's coming up in about a year and a little bit from now. So which leaves about one point seven million that would be available that are related to the Fort Union and the Cottonwood Corporate Center redevelopment areas there.
So Scott, just really quick, the ninety thousand in property taxes on the C D R A fund. Is that the city's? Portion that's coming directly to the city. It's not coming, well, I guess I'm trying, I'm just what I'm trying to ask. That's going into the C D R A, so that's just all the property taxes from all the entities that's going into the C D R A. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's related directly to the Canyon Center project and so that money. Needs to stay in there and be available to be distributed out. Starting a year from this next budget as we go through. So that's part of that two hundred thousand that we're, we're reserving to say we, we're going to need this in the future.
Okay, so the, the taxes that would be, that are, that are paid, because there's a portion of them that go directly to the entities, the ones that. Come to the city would be included in our regular property tax, new growth.
Some will go that way. Some will be distributed through the C D R A fund. So it'll be a combination.
But this ninety thousand is ones that are property taxes, incremental property taxes being collected by the C D R A?
Yes. So in summary. Overall impact of a hundred thousand per month, and again, this may not really be a hundred thousand per month, maybe it's slightly more and then comes up. Closer to normal. Is recommended to be a hundred thousand per month net downturn for, so six hundred thousand dollars for July through December. That we've put in here for sales tax mainly. We tried to keep our costs as flat as we could, reflecting only increases beyond our control previously committed. No employee increases right now until a later time. Hiring freeze in place to promote additional cost savings if possible. The ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one budget or fund balance reflects. It uses, sorry, I got myself almost confused line over line. It uses nine hundred and sixty two thousand of our fund balance. And it leaves us with about eight hundred and twenty three thousand of fund balance that we could spend at the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, going into that next year. And then capital budget, capital projects that are funded with general fund dollars. Could be altered or delayed to allow different funds, different funds, additional funds to be available in the general fund going forward, so. Yeah, that's kind of the. The details of all that.
That's the summary of that. Now I think Mayor, turn it to you and we need to have discussion on some of the other items.
Well, appreciate that. I, I have several notes that I've taken and both in some. Adding some things in and taking some things out. But I think let's, first of all, any comments from either one of the committees and thank you for the committees for. Doing all this legwork to this point. It saves us a lot of time for you to. Filter and and make recommendations. It gets to the point where we can focus on these more sensitive items. So Scott or Tim, I'll let you maybe. Lead us through each one of those.
Yeah, and I, I will do that. So on the county, the county park and ride locations.
Let me just, let me, let me just have this. So is this the list right here? Is there anything else?
This is the list that we had and I had identified in the Budget Committee.
All right, we may wanna, we may wanna add a couple more as we go through. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Anyway, County Park and Ride, we've talked, did someone just?
Christine, you got a comment?
I, I do. I guess. I, I, I feel like one of the reasons why I was requesting that we have a meeting with the full council rather than. Us making a recommendation of great magnitude is that. It would be helpful to understand from a council's perspective where we all see the future going in terms of how we think this will, how, how long we think this will last. And I know Council Member Brackett and I came up with a number of months where we thought. We would see a lack of, of revenues or revenues being decreased by a hundred thousand dollars and. I, it's hard for me like to even think about what to do with the budget unless we have, there's some consensus on. What we think the, how bad the budget may be. And so I guess I would just maybe ask at what point would we be talking about how we all see the future? So that we can then talk about.
Well, let's, I think that's very appropriate. Let's set the stage right now and I think that's exactly why. We're meeting is to get a flavor of the position that the council has as a whole. Because in, in my own style, I'm. I feel that our revenue projections going forward. Are. Are scary for me personally. I thought it would be more than six hundred thousand that we would, we would identify as a reduction. But listening to Scott and going through the rationale they've applied, it makes some sense. In talking with all the mayors again this last week about what they're projecting. For shortfalls in sales tax primarily. We are right in line with everyone else as far as a percentage. Even though others could be impacted. Much harder than we are, i.e. like, like the town of Alta, seventy, eighty percent of their budget is from sales tax. City like Murray has a much higher. Need for sales tax. So we're, we're probably better off than some because we have such a good property tax base. And we're not quite as dependent on sales tax as others. So when I look at what Scott's projections are. I'm comfortable with them. With a clear understanding that as we move forward, we have to feel free at any time to come back. And adjust and take more drastic action if. Numbers tell us that we're off or. We're going down a direction that could damage the city in the long run. Now again, we're not touching our rainy day fund. We still have that six percent of this in there that if we ever got in, in real dire needs. And two, and we did the truth and taxation. A couple of years ago, that was with the understanding that we would be using that fund balance for a couple. a couple of years ago, that was with the understanding that we would be using that fund balance for a couple of years and not go through truth and taxation every year. Now, some cities do that. A couple of cities were totally uh, planning on doing truth and taxation this year, i.e. Holiday and Mill Creek. They both pulled back on that because of, I think another city was too. I can't remember which one, because of of the virus. But uh, I'm comfortable with the current situation with respect to what Scott has outlined going forward, but I'm, but I'm, I I do that with an understanding that at any time we could come back and say we have to adjust.
Ma- mayor, if I may add to that, I I think when you talk about anytime we have to come to adjust, like we're gonna have to be looking at this every month. I mean, we'll we'll probably be having a a month, not monthly, maybe even every meeting or at least once a month where we're where we're outlining where we're at with the the finances and our financial report. So we'll, I see that exactly the same way. This is something that this is a proposal and we're gonna have to evaluate it month to month until until we see things uh, differently.
One of the assumptions that I've made too, and and I appreciate hearing everybody's comment on this, and this I think goes with what Christine is suggesting is what the vision people have. Well, the first thing in the hiring frees and no merit and no cola, some of those things is other than part-time employees, sometimes it's keeping our employees whole at this point with an understanding that uh, they'll accept that we're not gonna give calls all those things. And every, almost every other city, uh, except maybe West Jordan, because they have a whole different uh, set of issues, not just tied to the pandemic. But I think most other cities are taking the same approach is uh, not laying off people. Uh, but not giving calls or merit and keeping them whole. But again, uh, with the door still uh, open to evaluate something on a on a on a monthly basis.
I uh, um, I I I I like these projections. I like the rationale for them. Um, I think it becomes very, very critical that when we get the July and August, we probably get the August numbers in um, October. That at that time, we're looking, we're gonna have uh, by that time, we'll have March, April, May, June, July, and August, we'll have an idea of what the sales tax impact is and whether we're seeing any recovery. Um, and that that would be a very critical time to look at where we go for the last half of the year. I would be hesitant to wait until the last quarter to make those types of adjustments because at that point, if they're bad, they have to be enormous. Um, but I would hope that on our our the the second quarter, ending of the calendar year is when we would have had if there is adjustments that need to be made on revenues or fund balance or other things, we are able to do that then.
I would just add, I think Scott did a really terrific job with the assumptions. Um, I think this is very tidy and comprehensive. To Christine's point, um, I don't foresee sales increasing until people feel safe to go out and about, which truly won't be until we have a vaccine. So I think in all fairness, we should look at twelve to eighteen months of of budgetary heightened alert.
I think that that's that's a valid point. Um, I think when you listen to Mayor Wilson and the governor and and others, uh, that's definitely one of the assumptions we need to have uh, before us, but at the same time, everything is being um, looked at to move a little bit quicker than that, even without the vaccine. So I think you'll see some things start changing within thirty, forty-five days based upon the meetings that I'm that I'm attending. But again, there's also the, in those same meetings are talking about that you, we could have a bump or a resurgence of uh, positive cases in the fall when the flu season comes along. So we don't know. So to Scott's point, rather than waiting for six months and spending into a deficit uh, in six months, we need to literally uh, do a review almost on a monthly basis so that we can adjust whenever we need to. Uh, and and that's not just on the revenue side. I think it's on the expenditure side as well.
So can you help me understand um, maybe what you're thinking there to uh, Tim in terms of are you thinking for some of the big road projects that are before, are we, are we all thinking, oh, let's push those forward this year, but then as we come into fall, we'll reassess. I mean, what 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 big expenditures, what would, are you talking about? Just big ones, little ones? How would you be presenting that to us? And maybe you don't know the answer.
Yeah, I I mean, I think some of the, as what we put into place now, some of the larger capital projects will hold off um, until we see where we're at a little further down the road, rather than just July first, we're moving right into expending those funds. We we would delay those um, to make sure that we're covered from that perspective, but also not just the larger capital. I mean, we're, we're gonna be watching spending on on everything, evaluating that with where we're seeing the revenues come in. So on a monthly basis, we would be bringing that information to you, what projects we're looking at delaying. Keeping in mind that we're gonna be project ready, especially if there's federal stimulus dollars that could come in for project, projects that are ready. We're gonna be ready for those projects, but I I think we'd delay spending on some of those large capital projects, just to make sure we have a buffer in there.
How many projects are there like that that are outside of the uh, five-year uh, road maintenance plan that we have in place?
The the majority of the capital projects are that five-year maintenance, that one point eight million. Those would be the types of projects we'd be delaying. Obviously, grant projects, we continue to move forward and some projects where there's that that we're in right now with some stormwater that we need to get finished, those those would continue, but the majority of it would be that one point eight million that you're seeing there on the screen.
Yeah, you got any indication that any of the federal stimulus money will be able to come to municipalities? I've heard it going back and forth originally from the league, it was saying you had to have a population of five hundred thousand. They're working to get that clarified. Any news on that?
No, we're tracking that. Um, we're tracking that very closely. There is no updates on that, but I feel like they have to relook at that. I do know that and I've had Mike Johnson looking at this as well, that the state's going to be receiving some funding and how that would be distributed through to local communities. I don't know, but it's something that we're monitoring to see where that's gonna come, but I don't have any definitive answers yet.
Another point to Christine's question, which I appreciate, when we look at reviewing things on a monthly basis, I think it's obvious to all of us that one of our single biggest expenditures expenditures is salary and benefits. And we have to be realistic and understand that if things continue to go uh, worse than we maybe we are projecting, that has to be on the table as well. So um, I don't think, even though a a priority for me is to keep our employees whole going forward, if that's not possible, then we would have to create a a formular strategy to look at that as well.
Yeah, I would say as 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 far as the capital projects, I'm very, very leery of um, postponing things out of the five-year plan that we put together. We spent a lot of money and time putting that together. And one of the reasons for having it was just seeing the consequences of pushing things down the road further. And so, I mean, if we can get money from the federal stimulus to offset some of those costs and then have that help the general fund, that's all great, but I'd really be um, leery about pushing some of those capital expenditures further down the road. Um, I'd probably be more inclined to use fund balance wherever possible to, so we at least stay up on our road work so that we don't get really in trouble in another two or three years.
I I think it's, um, I think it's a combination of of things. We have tools with fund balance or or delaying and we we'd have to look at that, but there are options.
Is there any way, sorry, Tim, is there any way to accelerate road projects while while we have roads with no cars on them?
Uh, uh, I guess this is Christine Tally. I I actually asked the reverse of that question. Is there benefits of of not doing those road projects in case we do have recession and the costs of roads go down, but I hadn't I was thinking about delaying them in case it was became cheaper to do them. I I get your point, though. Accelerating, maybe, maybe, maybe they'll be cheaper if we accelerate them.
Well, I think uh, I I I'm kind of on the same page with uh, Councilman Brack and that, you know, based upon our studies and everything, we were somewhat behind on road maintenance, especially uh, uh, on some of those routine maintenance that we need to do all we can to try and keep that going, but but not with a blank check or at the expense of of not being able to pay for it. I just think we need to try and be sensitive month to month. And if new information tells us our projections are off, we have to be prepared to adjust. We still have somewhat of a fund balance even after this budget. Uh, we even have an emergency fund of of the six percent that's there to help as well in 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 the direst of of needs. And hopefully the stimulus money helps a little bit too. And so there's a lot of information coming forward and this budget that's being proposed is pretty, pretty lean, but is still uh, healthy enough to uh, keep things going. And hopefully uh, this is another side note, it it helps the economy, you know, if if we can keep some things going, it's good for the overall economy.
So I I think speaking of that, I I'm just trying to find it online. Does anybody off the top of their head know what the rainy day fund for the state of Utah is? Is it eight hundred, nine hundred million dollars? I mean, they're they're fun, you know, we talk about our fund balances and
Yeah.
You know, I I I guess we have a special session coming here in ten days and I think we pay our lobbyists all year round. At what point does the state of Utah pump in some money for roads for our cities? I mean, every city in the state of Utah needs money for roads. And what is the purpose of the rainy day fund if we don't use it when the rainy day is occurring, which is happening right now to all of our cities? And that would actually free up some funds so that we don't have to do that, make the hard, you know, the really hard decisions about staff, to your point, mayor. I just, I just throw that out there because I just heard they're gonna have a ten-day special session. They're talking about, you know, providing incentives to hydrogen. And I thought, my goodness, our businesses are struggling and we're talking about hydrogen. Better, so.
I I agree with you, Christine. I think you're right. There's there, in the general part of that, there was hundreds of million dollars and it would be nice. I mean, if I was gonna ask the legislature, I might talk, I'm I would, I probably wouldn't restrict it to roads. I'd probably go so far as to say, how about you give some of the cities that are gonna get nailed by sales tax for this year, a use of that money? You know, don't, don't put too many earmarks on it. Just say, you know, here's whatever X amount of dollars that they feel is fair and then distribute it out on the same formula that they do the others. That I think every city would probably be in favor of that.
Yeah, it looks like there's well over eight hundred million dollars in the state's two main rainy day accounts.
Yep, yep. No, and I think every municipality would be in the same boat as we are. Uh, I mean, some have maybe a little healthier fund balance.
It doesn't hurt to ask.
But the roads is a good one, yeah.
So Tim, I guess I I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know what we could do with Cam or Greg or or um,
Brian.
Let's, let's, or Brian, let's, I mean, it might be worth putting it on the table because we get that question all the time, you know, whether should we spend, should, how much should we have in our fund balance? How much is too much? At what point do you use it? And I appreciate that money is there. That's, that's good. That's good. You know, that's being very conservative, which we appreciate. But at some point, when do, when do we use those dollars and for what?
I will uh, I will make the contact tomorrow on that.
Okay, let's go back to some of the decision-making. Assuming with the assumptions that are already outlined, let's look at some things that still need to be decided. And then we still can come back and even uh, and we'll talk about going forward next, the next two uh, uh, work sessions and then our uh, business meeting in a couple of weeks.
So I I've already talked to you about the the park and ride. I'm actually going to have that on the agenda next week unless I hear anything different for you to consider the interlocal agreement, which would be six sixty-five hundred. I I told you at the, or two weeks ago, I believe, that I would communicate with the county. Um, I I did that. I think I shared with you. They felt like there are cities that have facilities in their community that s- such as Salt Lake City, that they pay their share because it's in their community. That's what they want to do. And so that's, I'm gonna put that on the agenda next week for your consideration.
Let's be, let's be frank with one another. They've also hinted strongly that it's it's based upon a partnership and where they've contributed and supported many things we're doing. They think this is a small uh, relatively small uh, favor in return.
Yeah, I I I I get where you're coming from, mayor, but if you do like a simple and net present value calculation, I'm not sure it ends up really in our favor.
Yeah, you're right. I I hear you. But again, I think we have more opportunities in the future to continue to get the county to facilitate things we're doing.
Well, and that's a, you know, for the, it's it's the next one that's 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 a killer because these are kind of both. The county's kind of already basically said this is what we're going to do. And the next one's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars ongoing cost. Uh, you know, it's basically a, you know, they've added an FTE plus to. Yeah, I don't know. If there's a really way, I mean, there's advantages to owning the park, but having to find, you know, we've got, we're gonna have maybe eight hundred thousand left over from our uh, appropriatable fund balance at the end of next year. And this takes a hundred and thirty-six out of it, you know? So now you're down to six hundred and ninety thousand dollars left.
Well, there's a couple of things in our budget right now that that I would challenge as well, that will help offset some of that. And we can do those in a minute. There's some things that we're talking about that I think we can eliminate from our budget for a year. You know, um, again, you know, these are philosophical things as well. Um, I don't think the either one of these are county parks. They are municipal parks. Uh, they're small. They're they're just like how, it's just like Golden Hills or or Mountview. I mean, you know, these are, these are parks are both eight to ten acres and they should be municipal parks, yeah.
Well, that that's a, that's a bit of a change in direction, but if if there's things you've got suggest that you have that could suggest up to matching the hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I'd really um.
Oh, no, I don't have, I don't have a hundred and thirty. I have about a hundred and ten. But again, I think let's go through all these things and see how people, oh, yeah.
Well, my feelings on the first two is I, I mean, I don't really see that there's an option. There's a, they they need to be put in there because uh, apparently the county already took them out of their budget for this current, as of January.
Well, they're maintaining the county parks until July one.
Okay, that's good. Didn't, that's good to hear.
Okay, so um, a- again, whatever we decide tonight, we still have an opportunity to see the impact and all the numbers coming together. And we meet next Tuesday. We still have the opportunity to come back if anybody has concerns with respect to modifying it further. So please understand, nothing today is final. We're not allowed to vote in these meetings. Um, so it's just a matter of administrative direction and so I'm supportive of leaving the first two in for the next round, subject to uh, for the discussion. With that being said, Tim, can we go to the third bullet?
Sure, that's fine. Talked about this. This was brought up in the budget committee meeting. We've had individuals, in fact, I received a text a couple of days ago from a person that assists people that um, have, I think, physical disabilities and there is interest in uh, I I think it's in Golden Hills Park to uh, utilize services to remove some of the snow from the walk paths within the park. And uh, I expressed, one of the things I said in the budget or in the budget committee meeting is just administering these types of things. If you do it for one park, it's likely that you're gonna have people say, well, you're doing it up there. Why aren't you doing it at my park? There was discussion in the budget committee of doing it, rotating it e- each year to different parks. Um, but anyway, and that too. But anyway, and that $2,000, it depends on how much snow we get to. If we have a ton of snowstorms, it will be more or less depending upon that. But that's, that was the discussion at that point.
Okay, a couple of points with that. This is interesting, dealing with this over the years. We have three parks that have walking paths through them. We have one in District One, one in District Three, and then of course, one in District Four. Plus, we have the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail, which is in essence, somewhat the same a little bit. I understand we're already plowing the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail, I understand correctly.
Yes.
In District One, Mountview Park would seem, I don't think you'd want to plow there because it's the only community snow riding hill we have, and it goes across that path. So I would see that we would, people would not want that one plowed, but I could be wrong. So that leaves Golden, Golden Hills and in District Three, Talley's District, the Hollow Park. Those two are both heavily used by walkers 12 months of the year. So my position, just because I'm not in the committee, so I'll give it to you and you guys can tear it apart, is I would be supportive of a couple thousand a year for both of those parks, subject to staff creating a policy or guideline of what that means. The concern would be one, that if you plow, you're not gonna be solving it like you would do around a facility. It would be just a general quick swipe through. And then the other caveat would be checking with Doug Folsom with the trust, who's the liability evaluator, if that's the right term, and see if, if there's any liability issue there that's above and beyond what we typically have in parks because you will plow that walk. Just my, my two cents worth.
I remember when we talked about this because it did come up with Mountainville. Someone was wondering, well, why are you plowing this walkway in Mountview? The ultimate end of that discussion was that we weren't doing it at the other parks. And one of the reasons we didn't was the, the, you know, especially if you're not salting, I hadn't even thought about that. The slip and fall liability could become quite significant.
Well, I think they're both used either way. So I, I, I would like somebody objectively from the trust to come in and say, what, what are the parameters? You know, we did the same thing on the sleigh riding hill years ago. We had Doug Folsom come down, look at it and evaluate it and talked about signs. We do the same on playgrounds. So on that walkway of have somebody like Doug come in and say, okay, under what's, under what condition can you do it? And how much do you have to do it? What condition of it versus what the, the negatives are? So.
Tim, what did Murray do?
Go ahead, Tally.
We're both questions for Tim. What did Murray do? What are other cities doing in this situation?
With Murray, for example, Murray Park, they're not, they're not doing anything with the interior sidewalk.
But they don't have a, they don't have the walking path, like.
Yeah. Yeah. So they, and, and I think a lot of other, I'm not aware of, and I haven't done a full survey of this. I'm not aware of a lot of others that are doing that within their parks. I, so I talked with Ben Hill, who was familiar with what some of the other districts have done, and there aren't a lot that are doing it in the interiors of the park. Not saying that there aren't some out there, but I don't think it's a prevalent practice.
Well, and Ben, Ben at the rec center, we don't have to talk to him, A, to find out if he had the capacity, but he would also probably still be familiar if any of the ones over by the Holiday Rec Center were being handled because he was over there prior to coming to Cottonwood High.
Yeah.
But Tim, did you ask Doug Folsom or the trust to come out and evaluate that? Or did you ask them that question whether there was, what the coverage would be for slipping?
Yeah, Ben Hill, I haven't spoke to them directly. Ben Hill did, as we were discussing this proposal. He, he said that, that they had indicated that, I mean, if you're going to advertise that you're going to be clearing these off, like removing signs that say we don't clear the paths and that, you're, you're going to have to make sure they're clear without any ice and things on them. So I think whether you advertise that or not, that, that's, if, if we are going to clear these and, and there's that expectation that they're gonna be cleared, you can't leave portions of ice on them. You have to be pretty diligent to keep, keep them cleared. So I, I'd have to have more specific discussions with them on that and what that would do for our, our costs.
So again, conceptually, I think we put it in for those two parks, subject to the evaluation by Doug Folsom, the risk manager for the trust, to tell us under what condition, if those risks or those requirements add substantial more cost, then we maybe have to pull back on those. But I, I know both those parks very, very well. I know that the walking part of it year round is extremely popular and especially if you are in a pandemic, as we are, people want to be out walking. I've walked our trail, the Cottonwood Canyon Trail a dozen times the last few weeks, and I've walked the Hollow Park walkpath also a dozen times last few weeks. And it is crazy how busy they are, and I'm assuming Golden Hills is the same. So they are, those parks were designed specifically with those walkways for that purpose. These walkways inside those two parks are not just for ingress and egress, is for the purpose of that walk. That's why they're basically flat and so on, to do that purpose. So if we can facilitate it at a minimal cost for it, but if the trust comes back and says it's a major liability concern, that would be a game changer for me. Yeah.
I think the mayor, the mayor makes a really good point. There's a lot of value added for pretty minimal expense.
For the comments, can we put those two in, subject to looking at policy and guidelines and have the trust review? Any opposition to that, even though it's not about?
Very much. Let's have the, let's have the trust evaluate them. And then we do need to run it by the, that probably be part of the rec center contract as well, because when it shows our public works guys are in trucks doing the roads, they're not, make sure they have the capacity to do that much more.
The capacity and also another variable, we would have to create a, some type of a guideline, and maybe the guideline is the same guideline we have for Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail. That that's done secondary to community access areas around buildings and stuff like that. There's a lot of guidelines or parameters you can put around it. Okay, let's move forward, if we can, to probably the more exciting discussion. I love this one. The Trailhead, Nature Park, Dog Park, Park and Ride, Ferguson Canyon. So, Tim, you want to introduce that?
Yeah, we, we've run some costs and, and have some preliminary design work of up to 1.4 million, as you see there. I mean, we, we can look at the design a little bit more to see if there's any areas where we can reduce costs, but that, that's what we're projecting. We've talked about this a lot. We have the county agreement. We have 125,000 in this year's budget. As a commitment to that, we have a $550 fund or commitment in the agreement with them. We just renewed, or not renewed, we just extended that agreement. Some of the options are, there's general fund transfers, there's Bonneville Shoreline dollars. We have about, we've committed a million of that, roughly 500,000 could go towards this. I've already indicated in last week's CDRA, or not the CDRA, the, in the council's communication that we'd have to evaluate CDRA funding going towards this. And that's gonna take a, a little bit of time to do that, which would also include going to the taxing entity committees to address that. Or we could renegotiate. So those are, those are the different options available. If you want to pursue this, we do have a commitment that we have to build a, a parking lot for the, for the trailhead as well as bathrooms in a park area. That's a commitment we have. We're gonna have to address that sometime if, if we're gonna keep that commitment. And the dog park could be part of that, as we've discussed, subject to the council looking at the design, subject to getting input from the residents on, on that site. There's a variety of things we still have to go through, but we need to make a determination on what you want to do as far as moving this forward or not at this time.
If we keep the agreement in place, we have to spend, our agreement, as currently stated, is to spend $550,000 or more on that site for parking and I'm guessing a restroom. Is that correct?
Parking, restroom, and a park area.
Which you don't get for $550,000.
No, and like I say, we, our Public Works and Matt and Adam did the engineering work and did a design and outlined costs, and it's up to 1.4 million, depending upon how we phase it. So that's not just a number we're, we're picking out of the air. That's a number that we've run costs on.
Was there a question, was there a question on how we phase it? I thought there was some discussion a little bit about how the phasing would be implemented.
Well, you could do it all at once would be the, the cheapest way to do it, which would be, I think around 1.2 million, or you could have, you could phase it by building the parking and stormwater related to that. And then as a phase, and then the park is another phase, which is in the realm of rounds, I'm off the top of my head, around 600,000 for those two phases.
But I think we're, I think we're jumping ahead a little bit. To me, one of the very first things that we have to do is we, we need to have a design that's approved and accepted because the cost, like we say, could be 200, 300,000 either way. And so getting a design that's accepted by the council, by our constituents and by the county. So the question would be, is that design something that we feel we can do in-house all the way to having bid documents? Or is that something you need to contract out? And if so, what does that cost? And what's the timing of when that would be?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, Tim, you've talked, you've done that, you've done some preliminary stuff, but I don't, maybe I was gone the week you presented it. I don't recall ever seeing anything on the site.
We, we haven't presented it. This is just something to help us understand roughly what the cost would be. We've had our public work staff put a paper pinned to paper on that and have developed costs with a preliminary design. That's, that's all we've done, but we feel fairly confident based on those costs of what it's, what it's going to be. We have not brought this to the council. It was just all in preparation of having some numbers for the budget.
I wouldn't mind seeing even the bubble diagram.
Can send that to you.
Tim, if you'd like, I have it. I can bring it up or we can email it after the meeting.
Can you bring it up real quickly?
That would be awesome.
Want to see it? Counsel, do you want to see it right now?
Yeah, can you just, for the benefit of those who might be listening, originally, can you just, because we, we touched about, touched on it back an hour ago and asked the question, and I, I said we had discussed this yesterday, or yesterday. So originally it was a park and ride. Can you talk about how much funding we had, how much we thought we had set aside, but then we found out we didn't have anything as much set aside as we needed to have? And, and just, can you just, high level, talk about the initial concept?
Yeah, Mike, do you have that information?
Sure. So the, the park and ride, back in 2008, the property was acquired using county open space funding. So specific to public open space, which was the trailhead, the restrooms and the park, and that's what's in the agreement. The, the funds used to purchase that are fairly restricted in what they can be used for. We've read through it a few times. Just reading through it, I, I don't believe park and ride is, is made clear in that. And then we've gone through a number of amendments to that original interlocal agreement. And that's where we're at this, this 2021 deadline now to construct them. Again, at, at 550,000, which that was $2,008 and not $20,20.
Can you add what grant we had? Are you gonna talk about that?
Yes. Yep. So I think five, four, five, six years ago, I don't know. There was a grant application made, I believe through WFRC. It was a federal grant for, I think it was a CMAC grant, so congestion mitigation air quality grant.
And Matt, you can add to this if there's something we're missing.
The grant was submitted for a park and ride, just a full maximizing that site as a park and ride area with a bus pullout, so bus stop transit use with the purpose of reducing vehicular trips. What Matt and I and Tim and, and the current staff don't, can't quite reconcile is the 2008 agreement was in place when this subsequent CMAC grant was submitted. And nowhere in that original agreement does it say a park and ride is an acceptable use of this site. It's, it's very specific to open space. So we did receive that grant for the, the park and ride and our match was 125 or 130,000. The total project or total grant award was about 1.5 million. But it was 1.5 million to build a park and ride, which doesn't fit with our interlocal agreement with the county for what we are supposed to build there. So we ran into this issue where if we build what we were awarded through the grant, we're at odds with the county. If we build what we agreed to with the county in 2008, then we can't utilize those, those grant monies because the grant monies are specific to projects that reduce air quality. So we have, we, we still have this money awarded and we're just, we have these two agreements that are at odds with each other. And, and the conclusion we've kind of reached is we can explore using that 1.5 million in some other way, but we can't use it to build a, a trailhead and a park on this property, and we can't use it to build a park and ride because that, that does not fit with county's agreement.
That's super helpful. I don't think I've ever heard all those pieces fit together. I, I really appreciate it. So I guess my follow-up question on this is, so there's 1.5 million for a park and ride. Is there some way that somewhere in our city was like along, I don't know, Fort Union or was, did we have plans somewhere else that we wanted to add some better parking along, say, Fort Union that we could put the funds to and somehow work with, with Wausau Front Regional Council to allow us to do that, but some way that then we can go to the county or to some greater being, the state and say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna add some park and ride spots for Big Cottonwood Canyon or something. Can we get some of that money back that we can then use here? I mean, that's, I guess that's what I was talking about when I was saying creative ways of trying to try to get some of that money back and use it in some way that we maybe have dreamed of, of getting more parking. Can we? I, I don't know.
So if I may add on that, I, I think, and Matt, you chime in here because you've had the conversations with Wausau's Front Regional, but what, the way I understand it is if we're not going to build it at that site at this time, the money goes back to them and we would have to reapply for funding in a different location and go through the, the application process, just like we've done in the past, and compete, just like we've done in the past. So there is that option, but it would be a competitive process that we would compete on a different site.
Well, that's probably realistically a four, five to 10 year process. Usually at Wausau's Front, it seems that that's the way it goes. You get on the five-year plan, the five to 10-year plan, and then wait till it comes.
Well, Christine's question, though, we could not then move that money at another location in that general area. Is that true?
It's, it's, we, we.
Site-specific?
Yeah, it's site-specific. We'd have to turn it back. They've communicated this to us because we've talked to them about it. And we would have to recompete for funds at a different location. And those funds would go back into that program and be reallocated through a competitive process.
I guess I don't, I clearly don't like to take no for an answer. And, and when was that conversation you had with them?
Probably about five weeks ago, four or five weeks ago.
So, so during the COVID time?
Well, no, it was, it Well, no, it was it was prior. It was prior to the COVID.
Is this an instance where we can get Greg, Greg Hugh, Greg, sorry, Curtis in the room and and pick his brain about ideas on how, I I don't know, strategies on how we can maybe get to a different endpoint? I don't know. I just I guess I've, I now understand that the dog park overflow parking has no funding associated with it. I get it. I'm just struggling. I'm struggling with the recommendation of where we would get the funds to to build that. I'm just.
Well, the the good thing is that the county is allowing us to use the site, so we don't have to purchase the land, which is a is a is a is a big thing. And I'm I'm supportive personally of using both some the amount yet to be determined of RDA funds and some from the Bonneville Shoreline, because I think the Bonneville Shoreline is going to continue to have opportunities to get additional funding going forward because it's such a high priority need for the legislature all the way down. So I think there are options. And also, I think another option is asking the county for an extension if necessary because of the virus impacts on our budgets as far as hitting the deadline of twenty twenty-one to get construction. But again, e- e- even with that, we could tell a story that we would have it all designed and fund the design this year and have whomever's going to do that design and go through the process of having citizen input, Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee input, council input. That's gonna take several, not several, at least a couple of months to do that. You have the design in front of you right now, which has some very positive things, but there's one very less positive thing to me is that if you you see the scale on the bottom, the amount of open space left for dogs is like a third of an acre or something like that. So we need to try and maximize.
I guess I'm not seeing where the dogs actually go. Are they all the way to the south? Or are they in the middle section? There's a lot of
Everything's south.
The dogs, do you?
Everything's south, everything's south of the roundabout.
Yeah, everything's south of the circle. It's actually one and a half. Well, the whole thing is about five acres. It's about half, so it it's two plus acres. A lot of it is on steep slopes. It's not you know, it's not a big flat open space, but you've just got a a little trail system in there for for people and then the dogs kind of run. Anything that's green to the right of the roundabout would be fenced in, kind of dog park space. And this this parcel down here was not part of the county's open space funding. This is a parcel owned by the city. This connection may not be possible, but at this conceptual level, it it at least kind of completes the loop there.
Yeah, I would see that connection as being one of the pricier parts of this design, and then the other one would be there's a lot of concrete in there that I mean, is there typically that much? You wouldn't, I know you don't do grass in a dog park because that's kind of a waste of money, but you do that much concrete, Mayor?
I think if you if you look across the country, you'll see both. Someone will have walkways so that people can be, and then you'll even have benches along those walkways so they can go in and sit down while their dogs are roaming rather than sit at the entrance.
So, yeah.
You've seen both, yeah.
This concept, you'd have one loop here, one primary loop that would be ADA accessible and asphalt. And then you'd have some secondary loops that would be just more natural gravel trails or something.
And those are not something you may do in initial stages. Another question I would have by glance of that, and I don't know how much time we want to spend on this, but is that do, what would be the requirement for the number of parking stalls with what's being done? Potentially the gravel pit and stuff, could you move that roundabout back a couple hundred feet and provide more open space?
Yeah, we we talked about that. It's possible, and it's just the balance of, you know, this will serve as trailhead for Ferguson and Bonneville Shoreline and the dog park traffic and potentially the the shared use path that that UDOT has so far contemplated building. So to go much less than this, then you're gonna run into a capacity issue again. We have designs where we've done less and designs where we've done more, and essentially it just moves it moves this roundabout to the left or to the right and just changes the amount of open space. In the budget, though, the the significantly expensive portions are the restroom facility and and some of the the infrastructure that needs to go into the trail itself. This area would be left as natural as possible. It's kind of part of the appeal. We'd have to figure out the right balance to make it, you know, to make sure it's sanitary for for pets and cleaning it up and things like that. But the kind of the infrastructure portion, especially the restroom, any pavilions or anything like that that we
And the fencing, and the fencing is another pretty expensive piece, yeah.
The fence, yeah, and that's a variable piece. I mean, you can get really nice expensive fencing or, you know, less expensive functional fencing. And and you've got some major retaining that you're gonna need to do on the site with retaining walls. So that's gonna be where the primary costs are.
Hey, Mike, quick question. Are we planning a separate area for small dogs?
Good point.
I I certainly think we could. I think it's just a a matter of drawing you know, drawing fencing in.
That's pretty standard in most all dog parks. You separate the large and small dogs, yeah.
We certainly could. So this this concept was done by Blue Line. They're doing our Bonneville Shoreline Trail Access Plan. We've talked previously, we we have submitted our application to the Outdoor Recreation Office of Outdoor Recreation for a hundred fifty thousand dollar match for this project. So, you know, hopefully we have that to add to the the revenue source to to get this project done. But yeah, I mean, I think as we refine this, we can design this to include those areas for small dogs and stuff like that.
Mike, what's, I'm just north of the parking area, there's still some green space along Prospect or Drive. Is that, that could be the small for small dogs or?
Maybe, that's that's
Pretty hilly.
That's pretty straight uphill.
Yeah, I guess you're right. I have been there. And and then you've left enough space between the parking area and where UDOT would, that's that that little white area is where UDOT would have their shared path or whatever.
This is, yeah, that's the contemplated, it's really small here, the the multi-use path that would be on Wasatch. So it's it's close enough that if you park here, you'll be able to walk onto it. We kind of built that into the design. So again, this is, this is a refined concept, not an engineered plan yet. This obviously will be refined further, but it is much more detailed than the, you know, the little sketch that's in the original interlocal.
So my understanding is that we probably need to budget something to proceed with at least the design and stuff, if not the whole contracted amount and not expend it, subject to further review by the council and and how we want to proceed. Go ahead, Christine.
All right, I was just going to say, I mean, we 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 have one point eight million dollars for roads and we we constantly, you know, have to, it seems like all the money that we use for open space and our parks always comes from a grant from Salt Lake County or something. At what point do we say, okay, we're gonna take some money? Well, I guess, I guess one hundred and twenty-five thousand has been set aside from our our fund balance, right? Or general budget?
That's correct.
But at what point do we actually put money from our general fund and into this rather than taking taking it from from all of the grants that we get? Because my, when we received the money for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, I I thought of that as actually like trying to tie the two two ends together to actually have a trail that connects between big and little, hoping that north of Big Cottonwood would certainly come through, maybe the development that ends up there. So I I I struggle with trying to take any of that money specifically for the trail and using it here because I see now is a great time to try to execute on that over the next year.
Yeah, and right now, what we would have to execute on that, though, is it it's the five hundred thousand because we we have the one million committed on the on the Despain property, so.
Why do we, why do we always go to that fund, that 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 bucket of money? We're always going to that that bucket we're using here. We always talk about using the money from the Bonneville Shore Shore Trail on the, for this project. At what point do we go into some of our fund balance? Or do we go and take a teeny bit from the roads? I mean, at what point do we we actually you know, not not grab that that bucket? I guess that's, that's my worry. We're always going there.
Well, and and that's the council's decision, obviously, on this, but part of what this this Ferguson or this trailhead is part of the study and the and the Bonneville Shoreline is part of this, so I I'll just say that from what we presented to you a few months ago, this is a portion of that Bonneville Shoreline. It's the trailhead element for that.
Yeah, and I guess I'm, this money from the Bonneville Shoreline Trail has been have we had a year? We haven't had it two years, have we? It's it's fairly recently come into our, I guess, possession.
Well, it's part of the transportation money that the county signed up for us, the the windfall they received, and I was on the Transportation Committee and we got twenty-five percent of it allocated for trails. It's money that would have come to the city in some fashion over a year, over three years maybe, but we got a lump sum upfront. It's that same pot that the six hundred thousand we get now annually comes from.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I guess it's it's my point is that I don't see that we're always going towards it. We haven't, this this million and a half dollars hasn't been around that long. I mean, I, from the purchase of this property way back in the day to keep it from being a office building, construction, it was always kind of presented as and and talked about as being trailhead up Fergus Canyon and possibly the, you know, a place for people to park to connect to Bonneville Shoreline. And so I I guess I don't see the you know, I see it as an opportunity, a place to actually get something done there as opposed to I guess, I don't know where I would hold off and use the Bonneville Shoreline. I mean, other things will come up. Where else would we do it? This is a chance to utilize part of it to get something moving.
So so I guess the way I see it is of the, if we were giving one point five million dollars from the county for Bonneville Shoreline Trail, we're using, we we've we've committed to putting a million dollars at the Despain property, which will have parking. And then, you know, and and then some land, but again, it's 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 a road to nowhere, and then we'll end up putting five hundred thousand dollars here, which again is like another parking lot. I don't know, if 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 somebody were to say, where did you use your one point five million dollars? I'd say, well, I, we used it for a parking lot for Ferguson Canyon and we used it over here. I just, we didn't, we haven't gotten any linear linear distance, I guess. It's like, yeah, we got a little linear distance, but we we basically have two places to park. And but I'm gonna finish my comment. You know, I know Ferguson Canyon is is incredibly crowded. Everywhere in this valley during this pandemic is very crowded. And we're not adding any linear feet for hiking. And that's 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 my struggle here.
I I support what you're saying. I I feel those concerns, but at the same time, I'm I'm excited to make progress. When I look at that twenty-six point acres, the Spain property, I don't see it as I I see it very little as parking. I see that more of open space with some parking. When you walk that side, it's it's pristine, it's it's maintaining open space, and I think it's a real asset to the Bonneville Shoreline. So I think that's a great place to put that million dollars. Being at Ferguson Canyon many times and being involved with that original little trailhead being built there years ago with the county. We need to do something. That's where we have the overflow area down. So the opportunity to get that done and have something constructed and then to get a win-win situation, to have the off-leash with it. I think there's by far much more win situations than the positive aspects of of both of those pieces than negative. I think Bonneville Shoreline still is a high priority for me, and I think we'll have more opportunities, just like like John was saying with the the state money, the hundred twenty-five thousand application. I think there'll be more opportunities, so I'm actually supportive of of spending, you know, a half million or so, or maybe even four hundred thousand of Bonneville Shoreline and then match that with some from the RDA and 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 use both pots to get it going. Because what I've learned over the years is that as long as you've got some things progressing and developing and you've got a plan, it's easier to get additional funding. So I I'm excited for the opportunity we have and even have any pots to go after, so I think that they're they're both a blessing to me. I'm okay with taking some of that and put in there.
I I think we should ask for the a recommendation for the Parks, Trails and Open Space Committee too. I mean, this isn't their purview. It's be good to get their thoughts.
For the design or the funding?
If they if they'd be amenable to taking four hundred of the last five hundred thousand dollars for this, maybe they would be, and that would be great. I think it's just the data, the data point. If we're gonna have a committee, it'd be good to get their input.
I think if you reflect back on the Y2 analytics, public space was a really top priority for all of our community.
Absolutely, as as was the dog park, yeah.
And it absolutely is going kind of, well, one of the first things the mayor had said. If you have this type of a infrastructure in place midway down between big and little Cottonwood Canyon. If we are successful, and hopefully we are with getting the twenty-six acres at the other end, going elsewhere to find, say, you know, we only need this much more and we'll actually have the trail between the two, I think becomes a really easy ask. I think it's a very popular ask. Continuing continued funding from the county or from the legislature even or other places. Kind of goes to the mayor's point. If you've got something as concrete as this there, getting those extras and 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 getting getting completed becomes a lot easier hill to climb. But I mean, I I I've expressed that, you know, whether it's to meet the county's minimum, we'd need four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to say that we were being doing something by the end of the next fiscal year or the calendar year of twenty twenty-one, I believe is what it was. The other option is the county is willing to extend a year, then we could use the one hundred and twenty-five thousand that we're rolling over from this year's budget to do the duh design and the public outreach, because that's gonna be challenging in the current current situation. But it will take some time to actually get a get that design done and get a, and do the community outreach and have that completed. That could probably, I think that should, that should very definitely be able to be done for a lot less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Which I guess my point is that makes it a it just, it wouldn't be a budget item in this current year. We would be, we could then discuss, look at RDA or other funding options for the remainder of the either, I guess, up to one million dollars to get the rest of the project done.
So the question to me, and we need to move on. I'm I'm sorry it's taken so long. Contractually, we have an obligation to expand the five hundred fifty thousand this year, subject to possibly going back to the county and getting modifications to the agreement and asking for continuations, a myriad of things could happen. So the question of the council right now is do we want to go ahead and budget to five hundred fifty thousand? Not agreeing to expend it until we get a lot more answers. If so, does that five hundred fifty thousand come from the Bonneville Shoreline funding or from the looking to hopefully bring RDA into it? A combination of both, general fund, but I think we need to put in the five hundred fifty thousand somewhere, identify it. We'll run into what we ran into a couple of years ago. We weren't sure where the money was until Mike Johnson found the Wasatch Front Regional Commitment.
So I don't, I don't understand. What does that get get us, though? Six hundred thousand dollars? We still are short six hundred thousand dollars.
Right, but it what it meets
I guess we, I guess I go back to, you know, we have all, we all remember the FDR and the 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 corporate, the CCC, right? I I would be willing to do that. Again, I think we have to be creative. I I don't want to see a parking. I I mean, the the dog park in in nature and trails is what I think people are gonna be dying for more of, more trails, not less right now and for the next eighteen months to Tally's point from earlier in the meeting. More trails, not less. And so if we don't have one point two to do this, I've asked Tim, is there a way we can at least get the, keep the, keep the dirt there and at least get the dog park going? Is there something we can I've asked Tim, is there a way we can at least get the, keep the, keep the dirt there and at least get the dog park going? Is there something we could be doing with our community? To try to, to, you know, have a, I, we can't do it with COVID, but I mean, maybe there, there's a way that we can have, it's a community effort to put the fence. I mean, we've got to be, we've got to use this time right now to be really creative. And, and that's why I had recommended to, to Tim in our budget session, where, can we, can we incentivize, um, our staff, our great staff who have great ideas to figure out how to do this for less? And if they can figure it out, let's, let's give them some money and as, as, you know, as a thank you, because if they're not going to get a boat, if they're, if we're talking about potentially maybe even reducing their salaries, if it gets really bad. I mean, we, we should be, we should be using this time. This is where we as Americans in Utahs thrive. Is how, is how to pioneer things and get things done for less. And I just, this is one of those things. We're short $600,000. Um, but I agree. Let's get the design done. Let's get the open houses done. Um, I agree, put some money towards it, but I don't know, putting $500,000 towards something that costs 1.2 million, I, I, I don't, I'm, it makes me sort of dejected, but there's got to be a way we can figure it out. We've got equipment. We've got people. I, I don't know.
No, I, I think you make a good point and I, and I'm open to those things. I'm thinking more from the commitment responsibly to the county. Uh, okay, we, when we met with the county, uh, the contract says that whatever we do has to have approval of the Parks and Rec Director. Now, I think he's flexible. I think he's accepted and supported the idea of having off-leash a part of it. But my understanding, it was subject to the fact that would, we would take care of those other amenities in some fashion. He'd still be flexible, how we design it, where we put it. So my response was to take care of that obligation in some fashion. I think we could even get some additional time. But I'm more than willing to be creative and, and, and look at how to make that uh, even more palatable financially. So I, I hear you, but I think we need to start doing something and show some progress. So that's.
Mayor, if I may add, our, our commitment isn't, isn't just 500,000. It, it's to build the parking, the park and the bathroom. I, I mean, that's our commitment. Whatever that cost is, that's our commitment. Uh, one time it was indicated that it was 500,000 or whatever. It's going to be a lot more than that. We know that. But that's, that's our commitment to the county, that we're going to build those things per the agreement that we, we signed on this.
But in the agreement, it says that dollar amount. So doesn't it?
I, I think, I think it says the dollar amount, but that was when the agreement was put into place in what, 2008 or? And, but in the agreement, it says we have to do those things. That's what we have to build. That's what we're committing to build unless we renegotiate it.
Well, and I think Martin is willing to work with us on what that looks like. Because we've, we've educated them that because the EIS with UDOT, the parking piece of it has been, uh, is changed in the appearance based upon the gravel pit and those other things. So I think we have some flexibility to to, to look at the design, but yet at the same time, as it's been alluded to by several people, um, there's a lot of impact or a lot of need, I should say, because of Ferguson Canyon and another parking. Uh, so. Okay. So what I'm, I'm going to summarize here, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, and realize next week we can look at this again, that we're agreeing to proceed in looking at setting a timeframe for public meeting, get the design done, get an idea what, and then that would give us more specific costs to have the Parks, Trail and Open Space Committee look at it, uh, having, uh, obviously we'll need to have the county look at it at some point. Of course, have the council look at it. Still, the question I'm not quite sure on is, do we have support to go ahead and do it? Well, I guess another question, the Bonneville Shoreline grant, does that have to be budgeted to expand it?
Yeah, it does. Right, right now it's, it's, right now it's budgeted, um, but we'd have to carry that forward into the next budget and define what it's going to be used for. I mean,
So obviously, one, one million of that is already committed.
Mm-hmm.
And I would, I would recommend that we put $400,000 to the, um, Dog Park Project slash Park and Ride, subject to, you know, um, the only part I, one part I would support moving forward on would be the design and go through that process. But subject to, as Christine references, looking for other alternatives, including RDA, including, including the state, including anything else we can to help facilitate that moving forward.
Well, I would agree with that, Mayor. I'd probably suggest that number be the 425, because the 425 plus the 125 we have out of this year's budget meets the figure that's actually written into the contract.
Yeah, I, I would be supportive of that. Again, with a clear understanding that we would not move forward until we fully vetted it and make sure we've looked at all options. So what's tied to that, and then we need to move forward, what's the timeframe of getting an answer on the RDA? Is that a three-month process? Six months?
I, I think it's a, uh, at least a six-month process. And I, I've dealt enough with working with, when you're working with the taxing entity committee, it takes, it takes a lot of time and it, and I wish I could be more optimistic in the time, but when I've taken plans through, when I've tried to be as optimistic as possible with moving things forward through the tech committee, it hasn't usually come earlier than six months.
I think part of the issue is we're going to have to re-impanel the tech committee because, uh, there have been personnel changes, I believe, over the intervening few years. That's going to take some time.
Okay. Any further discussion on that topic, realizing nothing is final as this discussion. It'll be back to us for more discussion, uh, next Tuesday. Okay, Timmy, want to go to the next item?
Scott, can you pull, can you pull that up?
Yeah, I'll do that right now.
The Cottonwood Canyon Trail, the Cottonwood.
Yeah. So it's the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail. We receive, as you, you're all aware of this, track funding for that. But the county, so we've been awarded that, um, and that was to do the, the maintenance as well as the signage, um, for, for that. And the county sent us that email, um, and the letter, and I forwarded it on to the council saying that due to the COVID-19 and some budget challenges, that they are not going to fund that in this, this year. So the question is, and the reason we have it on here, there are some, um, there are some issues on liability, trip hazards and things. That's the whole reason why we had applied for a portion of that. The question is, do you want to move forward with that, hoping to get a reimbursement from the county when funding becomes available? Or do you just want to hold off on that? Um, until we are awarded the track funds? That's the question.
My recommendation, and again, just me personally, and I'm going to easily be persuaded, I would hold and I would look at RDA funds for that, because as part of the Cottonwood corporate area, it's a natural, uh, to tie it to that. Um,
Yeah, that would be a very easy ask from the funds that came from that particular area to, that would be a, that, that cost benefit analysis would actually be fairly simple. If we can't get the track fund revenue, it needs to happen, and that would be a natural, easy cost benefit, I would think.
What I'm hearing on the track fund is that, you know, years ago, Salt Lake County moved all of its Parks and Recreation budget, uh, revenues from the general fund into the track fund. And, uh, to save their general fund, but now with what's happening with sales tax and transit room tax and thing, that fund is being hit harder than anything in the county. So, uh, a track may be not, we may not have any access to track for a year or two. Any further discussion on that? Comments?
So you're going to keep it in the budget or not?
I would keep it in, but not expend it. Subject to RDA funds be made available?
So what you're saying is the way to do that in the budget, Tim?
So if we take that money and use it for here, we'll get, and we'll get the money back from track later? Or we will never see it again?
I, I, Mayor, you may know, you might know more than I do on that. Excuse me. But if we expend the funds and do the project, I don't know if we would get a reimbursement from track, would we?
Well, that's what I'm saying. I wouldn't expend any funds until we verify those things. One, that RDA is available. Two, what the status of track is. And the third variable here is that, of course, you know, I know in Salt Lake County, the standard for capital projects, number one, the highest priority is always if there's a liability concern. And I would assume, being on that trail, we have some liability concern because it's not being maintained, uh, where you've got the roots that have come out through the system on trails for walkers, runners, bikes. So I would, I would say fund it, subject to verification of RDA funds being available, and that may be the second choice, maybe. First would be to see if track would ever reimburse it. And we can call Helen Peters and just find out. If the county is saying it's likely that we'll never see that, okay, then we come back to RDA and it would be subject to the RDA board, I guess, which is the council approving that expenditure.
So if we budgeted it, what you're saying is we put it in this budget in, under the CDRA as a, as a cost for the CDRA and then determine all of this before anything's expended. You're not talking about a general fund.
Right. I'd say it, it's a natural for the RDA. That's what the RDA money is for. That's, it's right. You know, ground zero for the RDA.
Okay.
I mean, I guess the answer to Christine's question is, yeah, if we expend the funds out of the RDA to do that, no, we're not getting a refund from track.
But we would find out the track information before we would do that. Okay, Timmy, want to go to the next one? Introduce that or?
Yeah, we've talked about that a couple of times. Um, it was an idea from the Budget Committee. There wasn't consensus having an incentive fund for um, bonuses for employees if they come up with cost savings. Um, the, the, but, or the, uh, Benefits Committee did not recommend that. That's where that's at at this point.
Does city policy give you the authority as a city manager to give small uh, payments to employees? What's the term in personnel, um, three to $500 or something like that?
Bone, a bonus?
Well, I don't call it a bonus. It's, uh, it's performance.
Well, that, yeah, that's based on the merit and.
Well, there's no, some bond there is X. There's a, a term HR uses where you can separate the merit, separate the cola, but if somebody does something just spectacular.
Incentive?
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's some type of an incentive award, but does our policy have any of those?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I know the county has one, but yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's, it's, uh, restricted or for, forbidden. I mean, I think if there's budget there, it's available and Tim wants to do some sort of a recognition or something else for, uh, an employee who does something like that. I, I, I guess I, I wouldn't have any problem with it.
I just don't know if we need to budget 10,000, but I think the point is well made here that if we have an employee that comes up with an exemplary idea, okay, uh, you know, I had a boss once tell me that, no, employees don't care about 200 or 300 or 400 dollars. I think they get thrilled with that. So, uh, a, a recognition of an exemplary idea of three to $500, I would just do it out of the existing budget through the year, a couple of times, if you feel necessary, but I would, I don't know the need to budget $10,000 for it, because I've not had good luck in those historically personally.
Well, and the, the, just from an administrative side of things, a couple of things. One, I'm hoping employees are doing all that they can to improve processes and a, a, as part of their job anyway. Um, and then administering that fairly is something that I've always seen as a challenge. Not that that can't happen, but that's, those are my two issues with it.
But the point being is if it did happen, that just something just blew our socks off, we would have the right to do it without a budget.
Well, I mean, you'd have to have budget dollars to do it, but, and I would want to make sure there is a very equitable policy in place and process to evaluate these types of things, just from an administrative set standpoint.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? The last one is the possible reduction of annual contribution to Central Wasatch Commission. I had personally proposed to the Budget Committee Chair that that fee be dropped in half, 50%. I was not successful, but it was dropped a minimum. It's right now the proposal is to drop at 10%. And in a couple of weeks, I'll try and push it down another 10%. I shared with them my concern, uh, along with Mayor Mendenhall from the city, that if we have any members of that committee that are not paying their full share, it's hard for me to justify to the Commonwealth City Council thus maintaining full share. So that's still in flux a little bit, but the current proposal from the Finance Committee to the full CWC is a reduction of 10%. But that'll be discussed and I'll recommend it to go down more.
Do you think that Mill Creek and Hollis, is Holliday on there? But Mill Creek and there was another that was just looking to not even do anything or?
No, Mill Creek, Mill Creek is recommending, they're, right now in their budget at full funding. Uh, Summit County has not got anything allocated in their current budget, which is, I have to take issue with that diplomatically, and I have, and so has Mayor Mendenhall.
Wait a second, sorry. And he's the chair?
I know that'd catch your attention. Yeah, no, we, uh, we actually both talked to him yesterday and, uh, he understands. And, and all, same with, same with Park City. Park City looks like they are getting it worked out. They will be making a contribution. So, so there has to be equitable contributions. You, you can't, you, you can't get a free ride. So yeah.
So have they been getting a free ride or this is, this year they're struggling to come up with the funds?
This year, I think, I understand it's this year, uh, for sure, i- if, with this current budget year and going into next year. So it's not been collected yet this year.
Is there, is there some kind of memo that we can get from the Central Wasatch Commission so we can unders- or, or do you, I, I apologize, maybe it's been sent and I haven't been diligent about reading it, but is there just like a quick overall summary of where the funds go and, and the compliments and sort of just some, something like two or three page or nothing long? Long, but I'd feel better about.
But I can share with you a copy, I can share with you a copy of what was presented yesterday from the Finance Committee that shows that summary. I can give you what I have.
That'd be great. Thank you.
We want to, was it, would everybody like a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll work with, with Tim to send that out to everyone. Yeah.
That'd be great.
It's still, it's still open for discussion in their next meeting. Yeah. But they're, they're looking at reducing a lot of expenditures going forward. With the understandings I've shared with them, that it's only fair, the CWC take the heavy reductions in projects and in things, just like we are in municipalities. And so we've all talked about, everybody agrees, that's, that's a concern.
So is the current thing, then that 50,000 is actually a $45,000 pay?
So, uh, right now it's a 45 minimum. I'm, I'm going to suggest to go down at least another 10%. We'll see what happens.
As, as far as having a budget or pro forma budget ready for next week, it's 45.
Yep, it's 45. Yep, it's 45. So what's next?
Well, those are all the items. I mean, we, depending on how long you want to go tonight, we, we can come back next week and present the compare, compare. Comparing with other cities document and, um, we don't have to do that tonight. We can do that next.
Well, Tim, I'm going to suggest that I'm, I'm going to throw out two other items.
Okay.
And then I would like Scott to briefly go through the comparison. So that people can kind of incubate over that. I think that's important item.
Okay, that's, it's, it's difficult to do brief on that because there's a lot of stuff in that, but.
Well, I, I, I think you can just, just go through bottom lines and tell people, look at it and assign. The first thing is that in the, the Public Works budget, there's a $50,000 allocation. For the 50/50 sidewalk program. I am going to suggest that we. Uh, put that on hold for a year and reduce that 50,000. Now, what that 50,000 is for is for citizens to work with the city. To share the cost of repairing a piece of sidewalk in front of their house. It's my understanding that that program has changed a lot over the last couple of years. To where I think it needs to be evaluated again anyway, in my personal opinion. Because that the vendors who are providing the repairs on those sidewalks. They no longer can do just a small square because they can't get a truck or a load small enough. So now we're suggesting to, uh. Residents that they go out and get a bid and put it back, come and have it done themselves and we'll cover 50% up to a certain amount. I think it really needs to be evaluated, um, personally. So that's a suggestion. Uh, and the council can tell me to jump in a lake and, you know, but I think it's, it's, it's a 50,000 that needs to be re. Defined as how the, uh, sidewalk 50/50 program works. And so I put.
How much of that is kind of expended on this year, Tim?
We, we have been spending, Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've been spending the majority of those funds every year.
I know it's popular. Um, and it, it may very well be time for a. For a reevaluation. I'm wondering how people will take that. Was that suspended for a year? Or, uh, I guess the other option would be maybe to cut it in half, just cut it back.
Well, you know, three or four years ago, you could, you could call and you could repair one square in your sidewalk out front. And it would cost you like 50 bucks and they'd come in and they would do it. They can't, we're not doing that anymore. The program is not what it was three or four years ago. Now it's, uh, these are, it's, it's almost like a small capital expense. We get done because we, we can't even get vendors to bid on doing the small, small repairs. So I think it just needs to be reevaluated. I'm all for the program. I think it's, it's outstanding because we have somebody tripping hazards on all of our sidewalks. But it needs to be reviewed, uh, in my opinion, and looked at. Objectively of how it can be more efficiently applied to a broader base of citizens throughout the whole city. Rather than just those who've got a lot of money who can afford to do a pretty major project. Just my, my two cents worth. The other one I'd like to put out there for discussion. Uh, in the, the mayor's, uh, Conference of Mayors meeting last week, the question that was asked, uh, all of the mayors. Was what are you doing going forward through the next six months regarding mass gatherings? Okay, and, um. All but two or three stated that they've basically, I say basically, a couple of them are still. Making final decisions between now and May 1st. All mass gatherings are being canceled. I.e. Draper Days, which is very much like our Butlerville Days, was it the week before? Parades, uh, most everyone is canceling. Because of the fact they have been educated from the, the county and the state. That we will still be enforcing to, well, enforcing may not be the right word, but we'll still be. Practicing social distancing all the way through August at minimum. With that, I'm, I'm wondering if it's appropriate in the budget to. Put a hold on Butlerville Days because of those impacts. Uh, not for the $60,000 savings, but the reality is that, uh, it's, it's not going to happen. But if, again, as we review things on a monthly basis, if things change, we can always come back in some modified approach. But my understanding from everyone I'm talking to through the county estate that. We're not going to see mass gatherings that's going to have thousands of people allowed through the summer.
Mayor, the, some, some of the responses we've received, Draper Days is canceled, Orem is canceled, Springville. Midvale's leaning towards that. Um, Saratoga Springs scaling back and. Bountiful scaling back, basically, I think just fireworks. Days of 47 is even meeting about this right now. So that's just some preliminary input that Ann was able to get for us.
Okay, I put those things on the table and, uh. We can again, come back, circle around on a couple of those next Tuesday. You want to move now and have Scott maybe go through those department comparisons? I think that's interesting to everyone.
Mayor, as he, as he's pulling that up, I just want to say one thing. I, I hope that, uh. All of you understand and I, I feel like these are tough decisions and they're tough issues we're going to have to be dealing with. And I totally recognize that and it weighs on me every single day. In fact, I have bags under my eyes because of these issues. But I do want to say, uh, the way I feel about our employees, we have wonderful, wonderful employees. I, I feel really sad that we, we can't implement things, the difficult. Times that we're in warrants that, but I do want all of you to know, I, they are such a critical asset for our community. And they do such important work and my goal is to retain jobs and I've communicated that to them. And I hope with this budget process that we are going through and what we're looking at over the next several months, month after month. That we recognize, um, the critical asset of our employees and the great work that they do. And, and that's, that's the goal that I have is to really focus on that as much as we can.
Well stated. Uh, before we turn that to Scott, he pulls it up, just a real clar, need for clarification on the timeframe. Next week being the 28th, is, is that just a, another work session like we're doing now?
No. So, so that'll be a work.
May 5th is we adopt a tentative budget, right?
No, well, no. So, so the 28th, we will have a work session and business meeting. Um, what it states under state code is that the first meeting in May. The first business meeting in May, we have to adopt a tentative budget. We have not.
That's what I just said, yeah.
Yeah, we have not scheduled the 5th as a business meeting yet. And, um, but we probably won't. Um, so it will be just a work session if we can, have to continue to. Have to discuss the budget on the 5th. We get through it on the 28th, um, we don't have to meet on the 5th necessarily for budget purposes.
Is our normal first meeting the second week?
No, our normal, our normal is the first week normally.
As I say, our normal business meeting is May 5th.
Yes.
But if not, yeah, I, 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 I would expect unless something really critical happens, we probably need to have. The tentative budget available and ready to go out on the 5th. That would, that gives the public. The, their full month of review. I'd hate to put it off for two more weeks unless it's absolutely unavoidable. That's my two cents.
Well, it's, it's, the budget will be adopted the second, or the third meeting, or the third week of June. There, even if it's on the 19th or the third week of May, there'll still be a month of, of public input opportunity.
I guess I'm just, I, I, I would, I'd like to see a shoe for the 5th just because that's what we have always done in the past. But I understand there could be an exception, but I, I think it's an achievable goal.
Okay.
Well, I think let's see, let's see where we are on after next Tuesday. I, I just know on the, on the schedule that we, we, we printed, uh. Earlier this year, we said, and that was tentative, that we would adopt a tentative budget on May 5th. That's what I was looking at.
Yeah, the only reason I put, pushed it out is I didn't know how much time we're going to need. Due to these difficult circumstances, and if we needed two more work sessions, that's, that's why I was looking at that. So that's.
Can we, can we make that decision on the 28th or is that?
Uh, Shane, we have to do, and Paula, we need to do public notices for the tentative adoption of the tentative budget. I can't remember what the noticing requirements are. Off the top of my head.
No, there, there, it's just, uh, it's just a public meeting. There's no, there's no published, uh. Public notice for adoption of the tentative budget. So I, I.
We have a public hearing for that day too. So if we do have the public hearing the same day as the adoption, we need to have that notice.
Adoption of what? We, we have to have a public hearing before adoption of the final budget. And so what happens is that the council, the, the budget officer presents. The tentative budget to the, uh, the governing body. The governing body then, uh, then reviews it. And then, uh, tentatively accepts it and schedules a public hearing. And orders that the public notice be, uh, be posted. And orders that the tentative budget and all of the supporting documentation. Be put out for public, uh, review for at least 10 days before the public hearing. And then, uh, and then when June, and that has to happen in the first meeting in May and then. And then, uh, first meeting in June, the, uh, the governing body would. Would have the public hearing that has previously been noticed up and, uh, the budget has been out for public examination. The public hearing would occur. And then the, uh, the, uh, the governing body can, uh. Think about it. They can amend it further. Ultimately by, by June 30th, they have to have adopted the final budget. This, of course, is in, in the context of no, no tax increase. If there's a tax increase, it's different as we found out a few years ago, but, uh, we're not talking about a tax increase. So that would be the schedule here. There is no public hearing requirement, uh. Before the tentative budget is adopted. After it's adopted, then comes the public hearing.
And just for clarification, it's the first business meeting, uh, of the.
In May.
Right.
Yes.
Right, in May.
I think we've made a lot of progress. I hope we have. Um, so. I would hope that that's, we could still go with that tentative schedule. That's, that's my two cents. We can discuss it next week.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's do that. We'll discuss it next week. Uh, this, this means you're meeting three weeks in a row. Yeah. All right, Scott.
But we're doing this from the comfort of our homes. At least we are mayor and, you know, that's.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Okay, I want to make sure. Yeah, okay. So on this, um. What I've done is I've, I've mainly focused on the general funds of the, the various cities in the county. Um, I have not done the townships. I omitted, um, Alta and Bluffdale. But other than that, I tried to hit every city's general fund budget. Um, including their population, their tax rate of their, their city and police and fire districts if they have one. Um, just to try and get an idea so that there's some level groundwork in terms of everything. Then moving forward, there's the individual classifications of the city's budgets. Uh, tried to group them similar to ours when we could. Excuse me. Um, sometimes that wasn't possible or sometimes there wasn't, um, things that went together. But for instance, in community economic development, you can see the different amounts budgeted by city. For a total of $58 million. Um, the average being 55, 48. If you have line items, like for instance in HR and Recorder, there were not line items for some of the cities. Um, on those, so this 1323 would not actually be the average. The real average would be here. That, um, takes that average and it, it scrubs out any of the cities that don't have costs. So that you can see an average of that. And then it shows the low and the high cost. And then the Cottonwood Heights cost per population. That's just taking the amount that's budgeted. Here divided by the population and then you get the cost per population annually. That we're, we're paying for tho, those different costs and you can see the other cities. So there's a lot of assumptions that are down here. Um, just really quick, the population comes from Salt Lake. Uh, this Utah State Tax Commission from about November of 20, uh. Of 2019, the tax rate is from the 2019 tax year because that's the taxes that go into. The 2019, 2020 budget. This is on the original adopted budgets focusing in on the general fund from all the cities. Riverton City has their police department budgeted in a public safety fund. And so I pulled their police costs over to show that. Um, and that's notated down here. Um, and then also Harriman, Mill Creek, Midvale, Riverton and Taylorsville. Have their fire district costs that are paid for out of a fire district. So they're, they don't show up anywhere on their city. So we utilized the tax rate for the fire district and the, and the, um, taxable, assessed taxable values for the cities. So that we could get back into an, an imputed cost for those services for them. But going along, you know, as you're going along and looking, um, you know, if you were focusing on mayor, executive administration, it would be in this area. The average, of course, there's costs in all cities here. So the average that's here matches the average that's here. And you can see what the, what, um, Cottonwood Heights is, is chart, you know, costing for those areas based on the budget. You got to be real careful when looking at some of these because you could do it based on population. You could do it based on households. You could do it based on businesses. And all of those denominators will give a different story depending on the community that you're in. Uh, some have more businesses, some have more residents, some have more, um. You know, other things, uh, that you could do it, you could do it on a hundred different ways. But I tried to go through here, um, and, and hit pretty much, you know, everything that we could, you know, council. Planning commission, if it was separated out. And one of the things though too is, for instance, there's not planning commission represented in all cities. So it's likely. But not known based on their budget documents that maybe they have their planning commission included in their council and legislative budget. But I don't really know based on the information that's in their budget. Also like things like in attorney costs, our attorney costs are just the municipal advisory services that, that Shane provides to us. But for some cities, it may include prosecution costs and others. So you got to be real careful going through here, making assumptions. Uh, because it just, it's not always apples to apples when you're looking at everything going through. Going through, you know, further into fire, you can see that with fire, so, some of the cities such as like Harriman. This is an imputed cost based on a tax rate. Uh, they're not an actual cost that's being, um, accumulated through the. The fire stations that are in Harriman, but the average here is 136, 54 with, um. Here in Cottonwood Heights, us seeing about 114, low being 85. And the high being $313. Um, Public Works is another. Um, we're paying about 79, 78, but our Public Works budget also includes. Our Parks and Rec where some other cities have Parks and Rec itemized out as a separate area. Um, the average here being 97, 64. Um, and we're paying 79, 78 with the low being 19 and the high being 232. Police, um, similar, we've got police 174, 39. The average of all police being 231. Um, the low being 122, the high being 409. Um, let's see. This just kind of rounds out some, some entities. South Jordan's a, a big one that. It looks like South Jordan does not allocate their, um, their fleet fa, costs into other divisions such as Public Works, Police and Fire. their fleet costs into other divisions such as Public Works, Police and Fire. And I think this includes both any any acquisition of equipment plus some of the costs like fuel and oil and different things like that that go into that and maybe some repairs as well. Then there's a non nondepartmental, which they didn't go into a lot of detail in some of these areas, and some of them are very large. Salt Lake Cities is ninety two million dollars in that area. West Valley is nine million dollars in that area. And I don't know what that detail is because they just don't tell you that in in the document that's available. Looking at the full general fund budget, going down here, you can see that for Riverton again, Riverton's police is budgeted in a police district. Harriman also has a police district, but it seems that Harriman has budgeted their police in their general fund. So I'm not sure if they're doing a transfer from their police district into the general fund or exactly what they're doing. It wasn't quite as clear as I was reading through their document quickly to try and get that. This is the part that I talked about before with the Unified Fire Service Area where you have to take the taxable value times by the rate to get an implied cost of what that service would be in those areas. So you can see that. And then if you take the general fund budget plus the police and or fire costs that aren't included in that, this gets you up to a more closer to apples to apples comparative as to what's going on here in Cottonwood Heights. However, the caveat needs to be there are multiple, multiple funds in multiple cities. I think West Valley had around twenty total funds. Some of those funds could have revenues and costs coming in and and summarized there and some may not. So you can't necessarily just look at a cost and say every single cost is included in there because it may be included in there and it may not be included in there. But there's not a ton of information in all the budget documents or sometimes there's a lot of information, but you can't back down into the costs that you know, that are specifically in a in a certain category or something like that in in the in the budget document. So it would take you know, a lot of time to meet with individual finance people at these cities to go through and try and figure out exactly what was going on. If you really wanted to go to a greater level of detail.
Honestly, Scott, I'm I'm impressed that you got this far with the time that you had. That that's that's a lot of useful data. It's more like apples to Japanese pears, but it's 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 a lot closer than I, it's it's a lot closer than apples and oranges.
I think it's always interesting. It gives you something to take a look at over the next week if you got questions with it. You know, one of the one of the good examples is like when we compare things with holiday, where we have basically the same population. And you look at fires, an example. You would think they'd be very similar because they're both with UFA. But you'll see it's one point three million dollars higher for us. Okay, and it's because we have an extra station. So there's some real variables there that that you have to look at, as Scott was saying, when you compare city to city. It's like it's like Parks and Recreation between city and city. It's it's, of course, with police, it's all of them have some real variables, but it gives you an indication. So if you see something that's a real outlier, we can maybe look at that further going forward, but you know, I really appreciate Scott and the staff for again, I think, a very transparent budget process. I know the committees were set up to allow everyone to have input. We planned on having a compensation study to have that input as well, but these are unique times, so we appreciate everyone's willing to be flexible and adapt to these times, but yet actually take more meetings and hours to review things that we've had to do and we'll do over the next couple of weeks. So I think we're we're ninety percent there. We still got a few things to look at and hopefully we'll be able to look at those next Tuesday. If you have questions between now and then, you know, please shoot emails or make calls to Tim and to Scott. We want to talk to me personally. Nothing is set. Again, we're talking about shooting for a tentative budget on August fifth, subject to getting things worked out next week. Again, that tentative budget is just presented to the council and we adopted as tentative. But we have then several weeks to make a final decision. And within our summer, we'll obviously have a public hearing, so. Final comments, questions, concerns, anyone has?
Just just how Shane, we worked on a way to do a public hearing on the budget over Zoom? That's interesting.
The the Governor's Order twenty twenty dash oh five allows us to have purely electronic meetings and to not provide enough opportunity for public comment unless we choose to provide an opportunity for for public comment live during live during the meeting. There's a line near the end of the order that says that any public hearing that is governed by the Open and Public Meetings Act all can follow the same rules. And so what Paula and I are working on is a notice of the budget hearing, just saying essentially that if the pandemic is continuing on at at the point of the public hearing and there are restrictions on public gatherings and the Governor's Order twenty twenty dash oh five is still in effect, then the meeting will be purely electronic and people can submit their their comments concerning the public hearing up to the beginning of the public, beginning of the meeting and then they will be read into the record at that point. There, I'm I'm on the phone every week with city attorneys in other other cities in in the county. And I think that some cities are providing opportunity for live public comment in in the meetings. There's apparently a way for like a Zoom meeting to have a gatekeeper that can keep, you know, some some people out. I'm not sure how it works. I'm sure Matt Matt may, but anyway, others are handling it the way that we are.
Thank you. I know the current special session has been dealing with some of those issues, yeah.
And if we need to do it completely electronically, I think that just reinforces trying to get the budget out there as long as possible so people have a time to compose any comments that may want to send prior to the actual adoption. But I, Tim, thank you, Scott. That's a lot of work. And I would echo what Tim said earlier about the rest of our staff. We've got a great staff. No one envisioned this world sixty days ago or even ninety days ago. I mean, we knew things were coming, but this this was kind of a gut check for everybody. I'm hoping that I'm optimistic that it might change, but realistically, we don't know what's going to happen and we'll do our best to deal with it.
Also want to take a minute and thank Riley Pilgrim from sticking with us through all this. I I feel bad that we've made you listen, but it's good education to know what municipalities have to deal with. And so appreciate your attendance and Chief Russo and the rest of the department heads, Mike and Matt, for listening to the the challenges that we face as a council. And your sacrifices just to spend extra hours tonight. Any comments from anyone before we?
Mayor, I I just, I appreciate Paula. She got everything organized and kept the meeting recorded and put extra time in that. So thanks to her as well.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Yeah, I I'm not good at doing that, but appreciate everyone's efforts. And again, between now and next week, if you have questions, you have concerns, some just didn't quite sit well. We've given ourselves time and that's why we had this meeting early is so we can vet everything and and take a look at it. So please let Tim know, let Scott know, let me know personally and we'll keep it on the agenda for another week.
I appreciate the extra meeting as well. I think we made a lot of progress tonight.
Any final comments from anyone?
Thank you, everyone. It's great to see Scott got outside.
It's gorgeous out here.
Yeah. All right, I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
I've moved that we adjourn our work session for tonight.
You have a second?
I second that.
Second, and all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.